I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Very good. Thank you very much. We've got a few more seconds before we gabble in. Thank you. Always. Aloha, everyone, and welcome to Village Neighborhood Board Number 26. Aloha, everyone. Thank you for being here to our initial convening agenda for Neighborhood Board Number 26. At this time, we are going to begin with our oath of office and opening ceremony, which follows suit for what we did in the past, in the recent elections, and moving forward to listing of our board. So I'm gonna turn it over.
Alrighty, so for those that were not the installation, board members who were not the installation ceremony, you should have an oath of office sheet in front of you. I'll give you a second to pull that out. What we're gonna do is, you guys are, I'm gonna say a line, you guys are gonna repeat after me. You guys don't necessarily have to use the microphones, just repeat as best as you can. If you did not hear me, you can always ask me to repeat it, okay? It is totally up to you guys. Okay, so everyone, all the board members that need the oath of office in front, you guys all good to go? Alrighty. Okay. I solemnly swear that I will faithfully support the Constitution and laws of the United States of America, the Constitution and the laws of the state of Hawaii, the charter and laws of the city and county of Honolulu, and the provisions of the neighborhood plan. And will conscientiously and impartially discharge my duties to the best of my ability as a member of the Neighborhood Board to which I have been elected. Congratulations.
Thank you. And before we move on to our first responders, can we just do a quick introduction? Because we do have new members. So we'll start with myself. I'm Jeannie Ishikawa. I'm currently the Chair of the Neighborhood Board.
Hello, I'm Sylvia Manley Cook. Been a member for a while.
I'm Michelle Umacchi, and I too have been a member for a while.
I'm Joe Fratcher.
Aloha, my name is Yvonne Yoro.
Good evening, I'm Aram Mendelson.
Hi, aloha. I am Thora Jean Charisma, better known as TJ. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jun Yamamoru.
Hello, I'm Ethan Rosler, and I'm one of the two new members of the board.
Thank you very much. We're all very excited to start this new session, if you will. And at this point, we do have our first responders. If we can call up our fire department? And if not, can we call up our HPD? Thank you.
Good evening, Lieutenant Romel Baiza with the Honolulu Police Department, Waho'i Police Station. Reporting for statistics for the month of July for the Waho'i area. We had one assault case, five burglary cases, thirty-seven motor vehicle collisions. That includes the minor and the major motor vehicle collisions. Zero robberies, which is always a good thing. One car break-in, unauthorized entry into a motor vehicle, and about seven hundred forty-five calls for service. Safety tips for the month is summer safety when going to the beach or the park or any recreational areas. Park in a well-lit area, preferably close to where you're gonna be at. Do not leave valuables in your vehicles. When taking things out or putting them in your vehicles, move your car if possible. Otherwise, hide your valuables. Always lock your vehicles. Do not leave your valuables unattended. And when you're on the beach, please do not hide your keys in the sand, as a lot of our local people do. And as much as possible, have someone watching your things at all times. I want to report about our gun buyback program. We had one, a very successful one, on July 12. We recovered about two hundred thirty-four firearms, and we gave about eleven thousand dollars' worth of gift cards. The gun buyback program is ongoing. If you guys have any unwanted firearms you guys want to turn over, you can contact our community policing team at 723-8710 or the Waho'i Police Station. And then it is a hundred dollars for any pistols or shotguns, and two hundred dollars for assault-type firearms or rifles. Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Yes, Michelle? Board goes first, gentlemen.
Hi. Please correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought in the past with the Avocado Street property, you folks have told us to call if we see people, you know, going in and out. So I did that four times this past month, or this month. And the last time, I had a lady officer call me back and said, "No, I'm not supposed to call because I'm not the owner." And they can, you folks can only do something if the owner is at the property. But why it was more particular that I called this time or that last time was because I thought there's no water on the property, but I saw a guy running a hose with water.
Okay, so Avocado Street, as well as I know Mango Street is also a concern, right? Those are actually private property. So the officer is correct in saying that we have to have a representative of the building for us to do any type of enforcement. If there is a, if you see something suspicious, then yes, you can call us, definitely. But for us to enforce anything on private property, we have to have the representative. And I know that we're working on, I think Councilmember Wire's office is working on trying to get that thing condemned, as well as other entities.
Until that happens, if the owner is willing, if he just leaves a letter with you folks that says, "Yes, you can kick people off the property," is that good enough?
Yeah, we have to have a representative there, unfortunately.
The person has to.
Yeah, yeah. It's kind of, kind of hinky, because like I said, it's private property. If we don't know what they allow on property to be done, so it's hard for the officers to know that.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you so much. With regards to the gun buyback, how many of them were ghost guns? And could you, could you folks make a determination as to how many of the guns that were turned in were made from these new-fangled 3D or 4D printers?
As far as I know, I don't have a statistic on the number of ghost guns. We just went by rifles, shotguns. I don't think we even had any ghost guns that were turned in. Yeah, in this past one.
And you did say that there were handguns also?
Handguns, rifles, correct.
Oh, okay. And then one more question with respect to the number of motor vehicle accidents. I think you said eighty-something. Is that for the entire district or is that just like the 96786 area?
96786, the Waho'i area.
Wow, that was a lot then.
Yes.
The motor vehicle collisions, right?
Correct.
And I'm sorry, how many? Thirty-seven?
Thirty-seven.
Yeah, that's a lot. And I guess my last one is, I know everybody out there is asking because I got a lot of phone calls about the farm fair last weekend, the same weekend that you folks had the gun buyback. With respect to both days, more so about Sunday, when they had the truck cruise, were there any arrests made for the behavior of those people that were doing illegal things on the highways and the byways in our beautiful Whitmore Village and the surrounding area?
As far as I know, there were no arrests made. I know that we had our patrol officers move people along. A lot of times, our goal is to just speed up the traffic, rather than holding them there, holding up more traffic, and then siding and whatnot, yeah? If we have to, we do, but as far as this past convoy, I don't know of any arrests that was made.
Do you know about how many trucks or vehicles were involved in that convoy? Because from what I understand, there were upwards of, close to a hundred.
That number sounds right from the lieutenant that was working that day, but I'm not sure of the number. I don't think they have an exact count.
Do you know if contact has been made with the organizer of that event to try to, you know, calm that the next time? Or at least give HPD a heads up that something like that is coming through and that they will be stopping? Because if they just convoy through the town, it's not too bad. But it's when they pulled over on the sides of the road and did their donuts and whatnots on the road that it became a problem, and it also became a safety issue.
Yeah, we do have our intelligence units that, that monitor the, I guess, the social media that puts out all these, all these ads. But as far as getting in touch with them for the next event, I'm not sure.
So TJ, if I can just, TJ, if I can join on yours. So we're gonna be asking them to come to talk about everything that happened over the weekend. Because there are so many calls and concerns that we do want them to come back, as we do with other organizations, to come back and give us an overview of what happened, what can be better, done better next year or whatnot.
Right.
That is on the coming agenda and stuff. So we'll be, we'll be able to ask them, you know, a lot of questions.
And Chair Ishikawa, is that just with respect to the Hawaii Farm Bureau? Or will you folks be reaching out to the organization that hosted the truck crews?
So that's two different, because we were in connection for the, they came to get approval from us for the farm fair.
Right, that was the Hawaii Farm Bureau, but they were not host of the truck convoy. Will you folks be contacting them to attend our meeting?
Yeah, that would be great. I don't know if that would should be on a different, I don't know if that should be a two-sink, because that could be too very long. So I don't know if that, well, let's talk about it after it, to figure out, to maneuver that one for either one or two separate discussion meetings.
I'm sorry to cut you off. This was put out on the news, but if you want the breakdown of the firearms that were collected, we had three, two hundred thirty-four firearms. One hundred seventeen of them were handguns. Thirteen were shotguns, ninety-two rifles, twelve assault rifles, and seventy pounds of ammunition. It doesn't say anything about any ghost guns that were collected.
And I guess one last question before you move on. Can you provide us with an update on the situation that was on Ko'a Street? I heard through the grapevine that it might have been gang-related. I'm not sure, just a rumor, but just asking if there's anything that you can update our community with.
It's not gang-related, correct. We're not looking for any suspects right now. I can't talk too much about the investigation. It is ongoing, of course, but yeah, we have, we have a person in custody for it. Yes. Thank you.
Ethan?
Yes, so I spoke with the owner of Duke's Clothing on California Avenue, and they mentioned that they've seen an uptick in, you know, this behavior from the transient population in front of the Waho'i Transit Center. They wanted to know if HPD is doing anything to address some of the stuff they've been seeing.
We have an officer that actually works with some of our advocates for the transient community. As far as something specific, we don't have any, other than, I guess, our ongoing, whenever we get called to complaints.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Sylvia?
Yes. Do you have any statistics on any accidents with electric bikes or electric motorbikes?
I don't have on me. I can provide that to the Chair via email if I can get it. I'm trying to think how I can even get it.
Or is it on your website anywhere?
I'm not sure. Yeah, I would have to look. Yeah, sorry.
Okay, Michelle?
And going back to the gun buyback, you said two hundred and thirty-four guns total. Times two hundred, if you take the biggest amount, that's only four hundred, I mean, that's forty-six. Right, yeah. And you said eleven thousand?
Yeah, so what happened was, there was a, there was a person who turned in like multiple guns, and we do have a limit of how much we can give out. Yeah, so we can't, just because you gave like a hundred guns doesn't mean we're gonna give you hundred times hundred or hundred times two hundred. Yeah, there's a limit. Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, moving from board members, community members, any questions? Please come and speak in one of our microphones here.
Hi, I'm Larry Meacham, Waho'i resident. Just wanted to say thank you to your community policing officer who towed away some cars that have been parked on LaO' Street a long time. Homeless camping out there, they're gone now. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear. Where, what, where was that cleanup taken at? Where did that cleanup happen? Okay, got it. Thank you. Okay, any other questions from the community? Okay, moving virtually, any questions virtually? Okay, nothing. Okay, one more.
Chair Ishikawa, yes. I just wanted to know, can you provide an update on the illegally parked cars that are along Mango Street in the area of the Mango Street Grill, the old Honda Tofu Building? I understand that it's been, it's been, it's been a concern and more so lately because there is a business in Waho'i that is using Mango Street as their personal parking lot. So could you share with us, what is the process when, let's say, a resident on that street sees a car that's maybe been parked there for a few days? What are their options? What can they do? And things of that nature?
Right. Those complaints can be, can be brought through the 911 system. So they can call 911, report the illegally parked vehicle or abandoned vehicle. Our officers for abandoned vehicles will mark the vehicle, and then we have to, we have to leave it for twenty-four hours. Twenty-four hours later, we'll come back. And if it's still there, we'll cite the vehicle, and then we'll start the process of getting it towed. The towing part is through the city, so we have to wait. As far as any other complaints there, I'm not familiar with any ongoing complaints, but I can have our officers do a, do a drive-by over there and check.
Yeah, if you could, because there were some vehicles that were marked over the weekend, Saturday about 4:00 PM. And today is Monday, 7:16 PM, and the vehicles are still there, somewhere between 6:00 and 10:00 along Mango Street. Thank you so much.
Right, again, so once they are marked, yeah, we have twenty-four hours, we'll cite them, and then it's up to the city however long it takes to get them towed. Yes, that's a different shift, so I'll check with the day watch, watch commanders. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for HPD? Yes, please, and if you could go to the microphone. And introduce yourself. Thank you.
My name is Natasha Small. I am from Waho'i community. I do have a similar question to her question because I do walk in the mornings, and along Mango Street, across from Walgreens, there is a business with a lot of cars parked right on the street, and sometimes within the street, sometimes double parked. Is there a difference between it being a private residence? Or like, like how she's saying Mango Street, or because he's a business? Is there a difference? Because I think that's kind of a nuisance too for people walking in that area. Thank you.
Thank you for the question. There's no difference. As long as the vehicle is on city and county property or a regular street, we can cite them and we can tow them. If there are blocking, there are danger to the vehicular traffic or even pedestrian traffic. We can get them towed, definitely. This is on Mango and?
No, no.
From Walgreens. On Olive, Olive and Cam? Oh, okay. Ojai? Olive and Ojai? Got it. Got it.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll make a note of it. I see, I see. Yeah, a lot of times, the community are, is our best eyes and ears. So if the officers don't patrol that area, they're not necessarily gonna see it. So we rely on the public to call it in. Thank you. Thank you for that.
But, and if I can just add to your concern, because I actually got a phone call from a resident. So what she was saying, and recently, this is about maybe a week and a half ago, and she just asked if we could find out, which I was gonna ask you about this. So the area that does the car dealer, car repaired, right behind there, there's actually no sidewalk. There's, if you, there's no sidewalk. And so they were working on a car outside, which then protruded into the roadway. And so that lady who lives near there was asking them to move their vehicle because she now is walking in the road.
Right.
And she said they kind of just ignored her. So she asked if we could bring this up, and I said I'll bring it up when HPD is.
Definitely. That's something.
In that case, should she, she should have directly called 911 or, or, you know, or is it better that there's a, there's a checking in that area or?
Yeah, you can call 911 for that. You can park on an unimproved sidewalk. However, you have to leave enough space for a person or a wheelchair to get through. If there's not enough space, then they can get cited for it.
I will relay that to her. Thank you very much. Any other questions for Honolulu Police Department? Yes, go ahead, TJ.
Chair, I just wanted to make a comment, and I think for those of you that have been to our meetings, you have heard me time and again encouraging the use of the Honolulu 311 app. So in an instant like this, Ms. Natasha, and thank you very much for bringing it here. If, if the lady doesn't feel comfortable calling 911, if she can take a picture with her phone, and again, download the Honolulu 311 app. Our money pays for that. Submit that through the 311 app, and it works. So please, that is a resource that is out here for our community, and it helps our brothers in blue.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
One more question.
Go ahead.
You cannot leave yet.
No, that's fine.
In regards to that 311 app, because TJ said that so often, I tried it. I waited a month for, and I tried it twice on an abandoned cart, same abandoned cart. No response. So finally, I called, and within forty-five minutes, then somebody came and marked the tire, but the app didn't work for me at all.
I'm sorry to hear that. Yeah, we do have a couple of administrative ladies that, that take care of the 311 system. They send it out to the patrol officers. So I'm not sure why that one fell through the cracks, but it's not to say it doesn't work, but if you need assistance right away, definitely call 911. So the calls are prioritized. So if it's something that may not necessarily need an officer immediately, then you may have to wait a little bit. But if it, again, like you said, if 311 is not working for you, then definitely call 911.
Okay, last call for HPD. Yes, come on. Very good. Thank you. Yeah, oh, can you use one of our mics? Thank you. It's just because it gets recorded, so you can be movie star after this.
All right, so one of the persons concerned about the farm fair thing we had, Dennis, Dennis Ng. Dennis. So it took me one hour from Ross's to Whitmore on Cam Highway. And to make things worse was, on Cam Highway coming, you know, there's two lanes and then emerged to one. So the city bus had two buses. One was on the right lane, when the other bus rolled the curb all the way and cut himself in, into the traffic.
Right.
Which was, you know, kind of upsetting.
Sure.
You're waiting there, and then to exacerbate everything else is when you come by zippies, everybody, instead of turning where they're supposed to turn?
They cut in.
They keep cutting in and running the, running the intersection. So, I mean, they're like, myself personally, about three, four times, I'm going, let the guy go, but somebody wants to beat everybody and go through the intersection, even with those little pole things. So I don't know how you guys are gonna address that, and as far as the farm fair thing, I don't know how we're gonna address that. I, my understanding was, people were against that in the first place. Whitmore is one way in, one way out.
Correct.
And my understanding is they don't want to do it. They want to do it five more years.
Permanently is what I'm understanding, yes.
So one way in, one way out. I mean, I don't know what these people are thinking. So, and I don't know how we would combat that, maybe you guys, yeah? Okay, but.
Thank you.
On the other hand, I thank you guys for what you guys do for our community.
Yeah, thank you, sir, very much. Yeah, thank you for the concern. Yeah, I know that there were signage that says, "Avoid the traffic if possible," but you know how it goes with, it's bad because it's a weekend traffic, right? Plus the convoy, and then of course, the farm fair. I know they tried to make a bypass road for the people exiting, but it's, it's not, you know, it's not a perfect solution.
So Dennis, thank you for coming, because this is something we will, I had mentioned earlier, we're gonna have to have a discussion with. The farm fair has to come to us for a letter of support. So that's why they will be coming back when we schedule that meeting. There are issues from the get-go, or there were issues from the get-go. We had concerns, but in all fairness, the farm fair is a longstanding event that has been held on, you know, North Shore, on, you know, East Side, all over the place. They were always looking for a new home for that event because it is a popular event for the kids. Waho'i was, you know, dicey. We knew from the start, traffic would be an issue. We knew from the start, the location would be tight. So the approval was given to try it. Now we know that things need to be clarified better, need to be planned out better. So Lieutenant, you know, if this happens for next year, we're probably gonna ask you guys to sit in on the meetings so we can more clearly define how in and out would be traffic, whether it's from another route or, you know, whether we have to cut through a different section or whatnot. But definitely, it was a rush at the end for, for them to get the traffic flow approved, you know? So there were mistakes that took place. But Dennis, you know, keep in touch, because when we do have that meeting, come to the meeting, and you guys can all share your mana'o and what you saw, what you witnessed, what you got. We got stuck in the, we got stuck in mud, I can tell you, you know, so, because it rained. That was the other thing. We couldn't, you know, couldn't help the rain, but that, we got stuck, you know? Not enough to get pulled out, but we got stuck. So thank you for the discussion on this. I think we're powerful right now on this one. I think we can let the lieutenant go and HPD go, because we'll keep in touch though, for sure. Oh, one more? Okay, go.
I'm sorry, I do know that you want to hally, but I do want to say that there, it was poor planning from the get-go. And you folks know what the relationship between the Whitmore Village, not speaking for all of them, but you do know that the relationship between Whitmore Village residents and the ADC, who actually at the last moment gave permission for the Hawaii Farm Bureau to have that, that event there. And it was poor planning completely. There's no way around it. There was multiple, there were multiple requests made to the Hawaii Farm Bureau, as well as ADC, for a copy of their traffic plan. Because if, if this is something that was gonna happen in our community, while the Hawaii Farm Bureau did come to the Neighborhood Board, like in March, permissions were not granted till probably maybe even May or June. So if it's of any interest to you, I would encourage any of you to look up the ADC, the Agribusiness Development Corporation, and attend their meetings, because their meetings are virtual. But it was poor planning. Requests were made by multiple persons, multiple times, for the traffic control plan. So hopefully, when they come and we have a meeting with them, Dennis, I would encourage you to invite your neighbors and anyone else that may have had concerns about that. Because when poor planning is done, it actually stresses our officers. Because in addition to that, they still have our community to take care of. So thank you so much for your mana'o and for coming out here and sharing that. But it is something, if they want to do it permanently in our community, then it has to be done better and not something forty-seven days before the event. Thank you.
Okay, we're all good. I think we have squeezed as much as much. So thank you very much, and let's give a big round of applause to HPD. Mahalo. Okay, and Fire Department's not here, so we are going to item four on the agenda, which is the initial convening of business. This is a section where we'll be doing election of officers, and also determining our meeting schedule, date and time, and our recess schedule, and also adopting board meeting rules of participation. So at this time, I'm gonna open it.
Okay, so we have four officer positions available. What I'm gonna do is open the floor for nominations or volunteers for the chair position.
I'd like to nominate Jeannie again. I'd like to nominate Genie again.
That's one nomination for member Ishikawa. Is there number, uh, is there another nomination for another board member?
Sure, I'll nominate TJ Karuso. TJ, please.
Okay. I apologize, I didn't mention this beforehand, just because there is two nominations. At any point in time when I'm going through each officer, if anybody nominated wishes to decline the nomination, they can. I want to make sure I put that on the table as well when we go through chair, vice chair, secretary, treasurer. So one nomination for Ishikawa, one for uh, Charisma. Are there any other nominations?
I also nominate Genie Ishikawa for chair.
Okay. So we have Ishika and Charisma. Is there any other board members that wish to nominate someone else for the chairmanship position? If not, we'll go into a roll call vote. Go to once, twice? Sold, okay. So when I call your name, I'm going to go down the, the list that I have in the order I have it. Uh, please say the last name of the person you wish to fill the chair position. Again, the last names are Ishikawa and Charisma. And for the person to be voted on, they need a quorum vote, which is five. Okay? So when I call your name, please say the last name of the person, Board Member Francher. Okay. Rossler?
Genie Ishikawa.
Manly Cook?
Ishikawa.
Mendelson?
Charisma.
Yoro?
Charisma.
Ummaki?
Ishikawa.
Yamamoto?
Wait, Ishikawa.
Charisma? Yes, yes, you do have to vote for your, in this as well.
Charisma.
And Ishikawa. With a vote of seven to two, uh, Board Member Ishikawa remains, retains the chair position and will be the chair for the remainder of the term.
I'm sorry, can you correct that? I was actually three for Charisma. Thank you.
Six to three, yes. Gotcha. My apologies, six to three. Uh, so Board Member Ishikawa received the quorum vote. So she will be the chair. Next we'll go to the uh, vice chair position. Are there any nominations for vice chair?
I nominate Sylvia again.
Okay, that's one nomination for. Did I say that wrong? Okay. Okay. Okay, so that's one, one nomination. Are there any more board members who wish to nominate for the vice chair position?
I nominate TJ Charisma.
Okay, we have a nomination for Charisma.
I also nominate TJ.
Okay, so we have Manly Cook and Charisma as current nominees. Are there any other board members wishing to nominate for the vice chair position? Once, twice? Sold again. All right. So we're going to go through again the same way. Board Member Francher?
Manly Cook.
Okay. Rossler?
TJ. Charisma.
Mendelson?
Charisma, please.
Excuse me? One more time, sorry.
Charisma.
Gotcha. Yoro?
Charisma.
Ummaki?
Manly Cook.
Yamamoto?
Charisma.
Ishikawa?
Sylvia.
Charisma?
Charisma.
And Manly Cook.
Manly Cook.
With a vote count of five to four, uh, Board Member Charisma will be the vice chair for the term.
Thank you.
Next down is the secretary. Um, were there any nominations for the secretary?
I'd like to nominate Michelle Ummaki, please.
Are there any other nominations for other board members to be secretary? If not, we can do a quick voice vote, all in favor of.
Um, I'll nominate a Aaron.
You nominate Board Member Mendelson?
Mendelson, yeah.
Gotcha, okay. That was the one time the going once, going twice, sold, didn't work? Okay, so we have Board Member Ummaki and Board Member Mendelson for the secretary. Are there any other nominations? If not, we'll do a roll call vote. All ready? We'll do a roll call vote. Board Member Charisma?
Mendelson.
Board Member Francher? Board Rossler?
Mendelson.
Board Member Manly Cook?
Ummaki.
Ummaki. Board Member Yoro? Okay, Board Member Yamamoto?
Mendelson.
Cherry Ishikawa? Okay. Mendelson?
I guess Mendelson.
And Ummaki.
Me.
Okay. With a vote count of five to four, Mendelson um, was voted to be the secretary for the board term. Last will be the treasurer. Are there any nominations for board treasurer?
Ethan Rossler, please. Did I pronounce that correctly? Thank you.
Okay, that's one nomination for Rossler. Are there any other nominations?
May I ask a question?
Of course.
We haven't had one because we haven't needed one.
Okay, with the, with the question, there is, of course, there used to be the board's budget. Um, the board can still participate and do things of that nature, kind of revolving the same classified budget. Of course, that would just go through our office, which the treasurer would be responsible for. If the board decided to participate in any community events that needed some type of financial assistance, the treasurer could be the middleman for the board. So I just wanted to make sure I put that on the table. But there was a nomination for Rossler to fill the treasurer position. Um, if there are no other nominations, we could do a uh, voice vote for that position to be filled.
I make a motion to close the nominations.
All righty, uh, we'll do a quick uh, voice vote. Um, all in favor of Rossler filling the treasurer position, please say aye. All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? One abstention? Okay, so the Board Member Rossler will be the treasurer for the board term. That closes the election of officer portion.
Right, okay. You need a minute? Everybody good? We're going to move on to, on the initial convenient business. We will be looking at um, item B for the determination of regular meeting dates, time and location and online webex option. So this is very familiar to us and in the past, what we, I'll just read off what we have done in the past and one option for this year. So in the past, we have met January, February, March, recess in April. Then we reconvene in May, June and July, recess in August. And then we come back in September, October, November and we recess in December. This year, we are asking, um, we would like our board to consider keeping August in the agenda, uh, calendar agenda, because we do have an important um, presentation that's coming in uh, in August and that would be for the library project. So we'd like to keep the schedule, um, for your consideration, to keep the schedule as is, but including August um, on the schedule. We usually recess in August, but we're going to keep it, it can, if, if the vote is. Yeah. Yeah, okay, so do we? No, we just need to come, we, we did one at a time, yeah, so. So we just ask for a follow up vote, okay? Okay? Okay, okay.
Cherry Ishikawa?
Hold on one second. So I can just ask if everybody's okay with that. Okay, so we can, um, I can ask for the board if everyone is in agreement to keep August in this year's upcoming calendar for this year, August twenty twenty five, to keep that as a meeting date versus a recess date. And everything else will remain the same. Any concerns or questions or?
Cherry Ishikawa?
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Is that August uh, presentation for the library confirmed?
Yes. Well, not confirmed, but after this, after this meeting.
If it's confirmed, then I have no problem with uh, keeping August, but uh, does that mean we'd have to give up another month to be in recess as well?
No, we're just including August versus skipping August.
Okay, so what happens if the presentation for the Wahihua Library Project does not happen in August? Do we cancel that meeting?
If there's no presentation?
Yes.
We could still have the meeting because we are keeping it open.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yeah, I mean, you may not have that presentation on it, but we could still hold a meeting.
Chair, e- even though I'm president of the Friends of the Wahihua Library, it's not the Wahihua, Wahihua Library Project.
Oh, that, yeah, that's right, yeah.
It's the entire building.
Correct.
Which is.
I apologize, yeah, I misstated that, yeah. Thank you, thank you, Joe. Okay, so that one is okay? No, we leave, like, January, March, we're authentic, we need June to allow. Yeah, 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 yeah. Actually, no, we've. Oh, yeah, 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 okay, okay. So, okay, so moving forward, we just had to clarify something. Uh, we are now on item C, the determination of the, oh, I did that, I'm sorry, D, D. Great, okay. Okay, we're going to go back up to item B so that we could clear up recess schedule on C. So we are, we are now on item four B, determination of regular meeting schedule for the date, time, location and online webex option. So any comment on that? Do you want to keep it as we've had it or looking for changes?
I move that we keep it as we had it with your inclusion of August.
Okay.
Cherry Ishikawa?
Any comments? Yes, go ahead.
Do we have any update on the renovations being done at Whitmore Gym? Because I think it's imperative, it's, it's very, very important, especially with this um, pending presentation for the Hawaii Farm Bureau that we have a meeting, I think it was February and October. It was in Whitmore Village, so do we have status on that project update?
I do not, but I can follow up on that.
Yeah, and if at all possible to, uh, if we could um, have that presentation from the Hawaii Farm Bureau held at that meeting that will be in October. I think it, we, we um, we need to listen to our family and friends in Whitmore Village, especially because of the impact that we all saw with this first Hawaii Farm Bureau's farm fair in uh, in Whitmore Village. So I think it's paramount that we have that discussion with them in Whitmore so as to allow our Whitmore residents um, much better access to that community um, discussion.
Absolutely agree with you because it was in their area, in their backyard and you know, that was. Yeah, that's, yeah, so that will be, hopefully we can get them scheduled. Um, Whitmore is, the gym is under construction right now, so um, you know, we'll follow up on that too and what there's, what, or when we're allowed to be in that area too as well. Yeah. Okay, so are we on? Are we okay with item B? No, I put, so keeping item B as is. Okay, and the last one would be item D as in Delta, adopt board meeting rules of participation? Again, keeping it as status quo or do you folks have any changes for that?
Chair, does that mean um, when you say rules of participation, so limiting all comments to three minutes or less?
Correct, and how we, yeah. So how we, how we adjusted it the last couple of years? And then Ethan? Oh no, June, sorry, that.
Um, just a question on the category. Could it involve um, rules as to um, communication from other than the um, representatives of that normally report here? Like an outside group?
Or as? What, not sure.
What I would propose is that uh, that groups that are not represented in the actual, on the agenda, the normal representatives and the senator and the council member, the mayor's rep, HPD, you know, those. I'm talking about outside organizations because we had problems with communications that went directly to the board members last year. And um, not everybody got them. And then they, they were changing communications. So I, what I'd like to propose is that if they're an outside group, that they only um, inform the chair, maybe the vice chair. And the communication comes from the, the chair or vice chair rather than from those outside groups because they, number one, they don't have everybody's email. It's um, Joe Francher there did not get any of the communications. And um, and I noticed that some of the communication changed from month to month, so it was confusing. Can, can we adopt something like that where the, the official communication either comes from the, the normal represented groups or through the chair if it's an outside group?
So what is being recommend, so what is being recommended, um, rather than, because there is an issue where, where emails are going to board members and it doesn't, it's not shared with all of us. I mean, that's been happening.
Yeah, it's not, never cleaned, it, it, some members didn't get, get those emails.
Yeah, because it, whoever's sending, sometimes it doesn't go to everyone, so what is being.
Yeah, and then we're taking action and, and cer- certain board members didn't even get the um, resolutions or that they, that they proposed, so. So maybe we should, for the outside groups, that we should only accept it from the chair or the vice chair rather than.
So yeah, that is what is being recommended, that all correspondence should come through the, through the chair so that, to make sure. So that means, but even though it comes from the chair, if any board member gets some kind of correspondence, that should be forwarded to the chair. Because that was part of what was, you know, missing too. So we got to be a little bit more fluid in how, in our, in our work, um, in our workstations and.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, is that pretty clear? That would be the, that's the recommendation. Everyone okay with that? Then for item D as in Delta, adopt board meeting rules of participation?
Would also like to propose one more. On matters that are outside of the board's jurisdiction, other than the obvious ones like the landfill. Um, because that actually involves the entire island, right? So, but matters that are not within the jurisdiction of this board, I think the board should vote on setting up, setting up those for, for the agenda.
Wait, and can you repeat? I'm sorry, I'm not.
Matters that are not in this area and not obviously related to the, to the, our neighborhood board, like the landfill is obviously related, we know that. I don't think anybody in here would disagree that we didn't have a say on that matter. But for other things like, and I'm not saying that I'm against any of them, all I'm saying is that maybe the board should vote to consider it. Um, one was. That could be, but but a- actually Red Hill is also entire Wa- Oahu. Right, it affected the entire Oahu. Maybe something like the North Shore condo. I'm not saying we shouldn't. We shouldn't look at it. All, all I'm saying is that maybe the board should be the one that considers to a, you know, to hear it. And uh, another example would be like. And another example would be like the Ho'opili project, which we decided long time ago, members would recall that, is it, why are we even looking at that? You know, and just because the chair of the Makakila Board wanted us to look at it, and we did spend a lot of time on that, and what the end result was, I recall that the board said, we really don't want to get into that because it's not within our area. So maybe if we do it upfront, we don't have to spend all that time that we, like, that example that occurred. Yeah, I mean, you know, it's, it's for the board to say. That's all I'm saying.
Let me just make a comment, I hear what you're saying, June. I think we need to focus on what is in, within our jurisdiction and what we have control over, and so there's certain things that encompass the whole island, maybe the state, and there's more things that we need to work on that are just within our own jurisdiction here, so I certainly get that.
That's affirmative.
Yeah, so I, and so that I understand what you're saying about people or organizations, communities that want to talk or present at our meeting, they have to go through the chair to get put on the agenda, they have to go through, it has to be the chair, and even other kinds of things, when I get called from the media, I always refer them to the chair first, and sometimes, you know, we're all busy, so it takes a long time to get in touch with the chair, but I encourage them, email her, call her, let her have that opportunity before we all as individuals, because we represent the board, no matter what we say, we represent the board unless we clarify it and qualify our statements by saying, I'm speaking as an individual and not as a member of the Wahihua Whitmore Neighborhood Board, you know? So I think we have to be careful what our roles are and what the image that we give off in, in our community, and deal with what we need to deal with here in Wahihua and Whitmore, and Whitmore's a big part of that, you know, it's a big part of that.
And if I can dovetail off of that real quickly, we were just discussing that too. So Wahihua is a very different, you know, you have different neighborhood boards, but we feel connected because we know we have friends and family, we grew up with Whitmore, so we want, we petitioned back in the years behind, and with the, with the blessing of Ben Aquahito at that time, who was a longtime chair, has fought to have Whitmore be considered part of Wahihua for a neighborhood board, so you know, that was a big, that was a big battle we fought to get, you know, because it was important to us that they are part of us, and that's why we meet with them twice, you know, twice a year, but it, I think, June, I understand what you're saying to, we should be more careful and just be more cognizant of, of which or who comes for meetings and whatnot, not just any old person who comes and says, can we do a presentation, whatnot, but I think so far, we've actually had really good presentations recently and very good communication with whichever organization, you know, and we've shared our concerns of, like recently, right, we shared our concerns with Freshwater Park, you know, like, why is it, you know, why are we doing that project? You know, because it needs more care than what they're giving, right? We are talking about that, like, when will it be safe, right? Because it's still dark in there, it's still, so, but that's part of our kuliana, so we want it to be successful, but we also have to be open-minded in some sense of the, because it's part of our community, right? So I think it's a good discussion, but I think we're okay if we, if we can help each other to keep, you know, in line and, and be clear-minded about what we're hoping to do to improve Wahihua and Whitmore. I think that's important that we have that opportunity to hear possible presentations and say yea or nay, you know, that kind of thing, I think it's important to at least be able to receive those, you know, because if, if we say, you know what, that we don't, we don't do that, we don't do that, we're gonna get shut out really quickly, so we have to at least be willing to receive an inquiry and then turn it down or agree to it or whatnot. I think that's at least giving us a chance to discuss opportunities, et cetera. If that helps, I'm not sure, but, yeah, okay.
Madam Chair, Erin, yeah. Hi, so to sound uninformed, but are they listed, are these our specific Wahihua Whitmore R Board, like, rules, or are these the neighborhood plan? Like, what are we, and are they listed, are they enumerated somewhere, or they're just our general norms?
For the Whitmore Board?
Yeah, like our, our rules of participation, are they listed somewhere? I mean, I-
Yeah, that's, yeah, the rules right here.
Thank you, like I said, I would sound naive, thank you.
Yeah, no problem, no, no, I was like, wait a minute, okay, I think we're good then? Are we good in section four?
Chair Ishikawa?
Yes, go ahead.
And I think on, on, part of all of this discussion, if we as a neighborhood board member receives communication that should clearly be given to the chair first to respond to or to the vice chair, I think if we as board members receive communication like that, we have an obligation to respond or refer that piece of communication in a timely manner to the chair. Now, I get thousands of emails every day, but when it comes to the Wahihua Neighborhood Board and the concerns that are brought through my email, if I don't see Chair Ishikawa or someone else on there, I will quickly forward it over to her because we don't want the concerns to lay in our email box or on our voicemail or on our text messages for too long a time. We want these pieces of communication given over to the chair in a timely manner so that action can be taken in a timely manner, so that we can recognize and acknowledge the concern that has come through from someone in our community, and that does include Whitmore Village and the greater Wahihua area.
Yep, thank you, TJ. Okay, last call, section four, we good then? Hearing none, then we'll move on to section five for monthly reports. Do we have Congresswoman with us today? Hi, Nicole.
Hi, not the Congresswoman, just me. Thank you very much for, for having me, so I can give Congresswoman Tokuda's report. I did send the written report to the board earlier in the month, I'll just reiterate a few of those, and then I have an addition to the report. On the update, it was Congresswoman Tokuda voted against the final enacted version of the GOP reconciliation bill criticizing President Trump's agenda to prioritize tax breaks for the wealthy while gutting healthcare for 17 million people across the country, slashing food assistance for 22,000 people in Hawaii, and increasing the national debt by over $5 trillion in the next decade. She proposed amendments to the bill that would protect rural hospitals, food assistance, health insurance for our keiki student loans, and the livelihoods of farmers, all of which were struck down. Despite her and House Democrats' opposition, the bill passed narrowly in the House and was signed into law. Congresswoman Tokuda recently introduced two bills to address Medicare underpayments for our rural hospitals in Hawaii and Alaska, the Save Our Loan Emergency Services Act and the Ensuring Outpatient Quality for Rural States Act. These bills seek to ensure Medicare reimburses at rates that reflect the unique challenges and tremendous disparities that significantly increase healthcare costs in the non-contiguous states. As the only member of Hawaii's congressional delegation serving on one of the agriculture committees, Congresswoman Tokuda continues to advocate for local farmers and food producers. Earlier this year, the USDA froze funding for the Islands and Remote Areas R F B C, a program that supports food supply chains in isolated regions. The freeze included $26.5 million intended to help Hawaii producers expand operations and boost local food production. In response, the Congresswoman led a bipartisan letter urging USDA to release funds for the R F B C and support the development of remote food producers. The addition to this report is that Rep. Tokuda, as a member of the House Armed Services Committee, voted to send H R 3838 to streamlining procurement for Effective Execution and Delivery and National Defense Authorization Act, the NDAA, for fiscal year 2026 to the full House of Representatives, stating, "As a member of the House Armed Services Committee, it's important to me that the Department of Defense is a good neighbor to those that reside in Hawaii and take the utmost care to protect our most vulnerable communities," said Rep. Tokuda. "By mandating the department to more accurately capture its housing needs, we can plan for a proper amount of military workforce housing while responding to the local impact of the military's presence on Hawaii's limited supply of affordable homes. I also fought for our new reporting mandates for cases of sexual assault, intimate partner violence, and child abuse to ensure that the Department of Defense meets its responsibility to care for our military family." The bill, as amended, includes several top priorities for Hawaii service members, Department of Defense civilian employees, and their families secured by Rep. Tokuda. Oh, let's see here, oh, and then she, for her, her meetings this past month, she met with Job Corps, Job Corps alumni in Waimea Nalo to listen to their stories about the impact that Job Corps has had on their lives. The Congresswoman met with Oahu emergency dispatchers to understand how to better assist the first responders of Hawaii's 2nd Congressional District. In the past, Congresswoman Tokuda has sponsored the Crisis Assistance and Resources in Emergencies for First Responders Act. And then she had a visit to Waimea, where she toured the Self-Help Housing Corporation of Hawaii Pokai Bay Project to learn how USDA rural development funding supports families in West Oahu. She then met with students participating in Pua Kailulu Youth Summer Program to engage in discussions around their focus areas, which included food stability, military presence, and sense of place. Afterwards, she headed to Kahumana Farms, Ka'au'au for Keiki, where she got to tour their food distribution facility and help distribute boxes to our families. Finally, she went to the Waimea Sore to learn about the impact of snap cuts to our local farmers and producers and how that would affect our local communities. More information on these can be found on the website, I'll put that in the chat, and please let me know if you have any questions, I might not have the answer, but I'll do my best to get you one quickly.
Thank you. Any questions for Congresswoman's office? Here, oh, go ahead.
Hi, Nicole, just a quick question, could you repeat that bill number when you were talking about sexual assault victims?
Oh, for the, for the NDAA?
Yes.
Okay, let me look back through that real quick. It is H R 3838.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
Hi, hi, thanks for being here, Nicole, just sort of, I know that Representative Tokuda is aware of this, but as part of the, working for the Department of Education, we're just sort of securing the hatches and getting ready for the federal funds that have not been distributed since July 1st, and so what that kind of looks like is the 21st Century Grants, which is after-school tutoring, and the Jump Start Programs in Wailea and around here, which are after-school sports programs, although they seem like they'll continue, we're just sort of, they can't continue unless the money is dropped. Are there any updates and what is sort of the action being taken by Congress?
Okay, I will take that back because I do not know the, the answer for that. So the question, can I clarify, is, is there any, any information about when these grants will, when the funding will be put in place for this?
Yeah, so it's Title II through VI, when that funding will come to the state.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board, from the community? Okay, then we do have Dean online.
Aloha, Nicole, how are you today?
Hi, Dean.
Great, I wanted to ask if the Congresswoman could please look into, I guess, with President Trump doing away with the Federal Department of Education, we have a Secretary of Education that's being paid thousands of dollars, taxpayer money, that now she has no department to run, literally no department to run, and I don't understand why if we have no department, she has no department to run or manage, you know, I know there are still going to be things left to do, but still, she should not be receiving, even carrying a title of Secretary of Education, it should be lowered, it should be a lower pay to save us money that he's cut, and that can, that money that's saved by paying her less can go to programs that he's cut immediately to thousands of children in this, in this country. So if she can look at introducing some type of legislation act to reform the position of Secretary of Education or any, Secretary of any department that he has downsized, that people have lost their jobs and they're getting smaller, because it's no longer necessary to have someone pay that much, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, I'll bring that to her.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? But Nicole, I do have one, if you don't mind?
Don't mind.
Okay, and it's, you had mentioned earlier in your report that, that rural hospitals would be considered for some funding, and if I heard right, I just want to find out if Wahihua General Hospital will be part of that, which is part of Queens now, but would Wahihua be considered for some funding?
I'm not exactly sure exactly where the funding will go, this is part of a broader act, right? So I'm not sure how the funding part of that goes. I'm, I'm guessing it's not parsed out individually to each hospital at this level yet, right? Because the act was introduced, it hasn't been voted on yet or anything, so early days for that, I would say.
Okay, can you put a bug in Congresswoman's ear that, you know, the hospital is busy, which is good because it's the only one in, in nearby areas? If the Wahihua, Queens Wahihua should, could be considered for some funding, I think they would appreciate that, and the community would appreciate that.
I believe, well, I don't know, I know there were two of them, I, I know that the one is, is more geared towards the amount that, that the hospitals, the doctors would get, you know, refunded, not refunded, but paid, right? Because right now, the, the level is very low, you know, barely sustainable for their reimbursements through Medicare, right? So I, I think that, that one of these acts is to raise that level because the cost is just much higher here in Hawaii and, and Alaska, and, you know, the non-contiguous states. I'm not sure about the other one though, but yeah, I will definitely say that, and I believe that, I believe that she's went there recently, or toured there recently in the last several months here, so it should be fresh on her mind.
Okay, appreciate the help, if you can put a bug in her, the community would appreciate that, thank you very much, and we have one more question for you.
In regard to rural, rural hospitals, would that money be going direct, would, would the Congresswoman's bill appropriate money directly to the units, or would that be money to the state to redirect as required?
It's generally, it goes from federal government to the state, and the state disperses.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for the Congresswoman's office? No, okay, thank you very much, Nicole.
You're welcome.
And moving on to our Army Representative, Lieutenant Cox? Not here, nobody, online, nope, okay, then we're moving on to our Navy Representative, Daniel?
Good evening and aloha to everybody here, to our board members and to our public online and in person here.
Can't hear you, yeah.
Can you hear me okay now? All right, I'll stay really close. All right, I dropped off a couple of issues of our, our weekly Moleo Newsletter, which outlines a lot of the other work that we've done, the US United States Navy has done in the community. Which outlines a lot of the other work that we've done, the US United States Navy has done in the community. I encourage you to pick up a copy on your way out. Uh, Navy Region Hawaii has implemented a new uh app for your phone. Uh, but you can download it on either uh your uh Android or your Apple uh um phone in the, in the App Store. And then that, any, any kind of update that comes from the United States Navy here in Hawaii that may be pertinent to you. Uh, you can find it on the app there if you are interested in that. Not everything on there will be applicable, uh, but for the retirees of the community especially. Uh, who will come on base, uh, you know, hours of operation or any other uh, large scale events that may be of interest to them. And certainly any, anything that uh is perhaps may impede traffic and are in around the base, uh, that also will be on the app as well. Uh, we have lifted, um, well, made an alteration to Force Protection Bravo, which does apply to the United States Army here to the base as well. Uh, the Trusted Traveler uh program has been reimplemented, so uh you no longer have to show. Your guests and vehicles no longer have to show their IDs as they had done for the previous month after uh. Uh, the threat, the uh Force Protection had been raised Bravo. So uh, that's good that all, because of that, we're able to resume our ship tours that take place at Pearl Harbor every Saturday. From a zero nine to ten forty-five. Again, I encourage board members and the public, if you're interested to see how the United States Navy ships operate. Or where your taxpayer money is going to, please take us up on the, on this offer. If you'd like to reserve a uh, a spot on that tour, the phone number is eight zero eight four seven three two eight nine zero. And that's my phone number, so I'll pick up the phone and we'll figure out what tour works best for you. Uh, this week we have USS Shiloh, next two weeks we have USS Frankie Peterson Jr. And uh, yeah, I think that's it for now. Um, I will say on behalf of the Army though too. With the uh, the festival from last week, traffic was backed up all the way to Schofield. And many times it was very, it was almost took twenty minutes to get from the uh, the exit of the base to the, the H2. So it um, it does impact. And uh, when we do sit down and talk about this, I would encourage the Army to be here too as well.
Okay, we'll include you in the meeting. Thank you very much. Uh, hold on, go ahead, Joe.
Uh, I'm sorry, Daniel. What was the app? The Navy app?
This is a Navy Region Hawaii app that applies to uh, and all Navy that is in Hawaii about uh, our bases. Uh, if there's going to be any kind of closures or anything that may impact the community. Uh, and it will be, uh, that's kind of a, you'll get, if you uh subscribe to that on your phone, download it on your, on your Apple phone or your Android phone. Uh, you can get notifications uh that may be impactful to you.
And it's called Navy Regional App?
Yep, Navy Region Hawaii app, yeah.
Thank you.
You got it.
Effron?
I'm happy that you brought up the fact that individuals who live on Schofield were upset by the increased traffic times due to the Farm uh Festival that occurred. A lot of folks who live on Schofield and Wheeler aren't necessarily aware that they fall within the jurisdiction of the Wahawa Whitmore Neighborhood Board, so.
Effron, I'm sorry to interrupt, but could you go closer because we can't move down this end? Thanks.
Are you able to hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you.
I'm just happy that you brought it up because a lot of folks who live on Schofield and Wheeler aren't aware. That they fall within the jurisdiction of the Wahawa Whitmore Village Neighborhood Board. So I look forward to addressing that in the future.
Go ahead. Thanks for answering. Hi, um, good evening. Um, so one of my friends um, in the last six months lost his civilian job. He was working for the Navy as a captain of a boat and what he was doing during, um, he was surveying Pearl Harbor. Because of the dry docks being um upgraded. So those nuclear submarine dry docks were being upgraded and what his job was to do was to monitor the, the noise pollution happening. And so then what would happen is if there, if levels were too high or if a turtle was in the area or another endangered species was in the area. There was a call and then they would stop and they'd collect data and would wait till the noise. So there's some kind of bubble that would protect the area so that that sonar noise pollution wouldn't impact any migrating or animals in the area. He has been fired since the new administration. I'm wondering what environmental protections are currently in place to ensure that the diet, sorry, the dry docks. That are being renovated are following protocols or filing EPA protocols.
That's a great question, Erin. I'm going to have to go back and give you an answer on that one. Can you give me a month or next meeting and I'll come back and uh, we'll give you an answer. Thanks.
Thank you Erin. Any other questions from the board? Yeah, go ahead TJ.
And actually another question, just a mahalo nui loa. Um, for those of you who don't know, Daniel and his son Toby have been coming out every week to the Kaukau for Keiki Program. Lead, loaning us some muscle along with some of the members of the Laulima Program. We got two more weeks to go tomorrow and next Tuesday. So we are always needing volunteers at the freshwater park. But thank you for coming out there and helping to keep our keikis fed during the months of summer. Thank you very much. Very appreciated.
Honored and it's appreciated, so. You guys are great.
Oh, yes, go ahead, yeah.
Hi, and then sorry Daniel, did interrupt. Um, you mentioned that you could uh tailor tours. Could we get a tour of the new dry docks being created or renovated?
Uh, that's a great question. I uh, you know, mainly ships is what I've been uh looking into. That is, the ships don't, Navy Region Hawaii handles all the shore assets. So that is more of a mid-Atlantic, but that's not to say we couldn't.
So I think it's like nuclear submarines. Would that not fall under the Navy?
That would be a subpack, yes.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
All right, Erin, do you want me to look into this or?
It would be very cool, yes.
Go ahead, Joe.
I, I think you're ahead of the game on your app. The only app for the Navy Region is Southeast.
Navy Region Hawaii or are we?
It's not there.
I might, okay, maybe Joint Base um, Pearl, Pearl Harbor, uh, take them. Please let me know if you can't find it. That's not good for us, so we will, we'll go back to the, the, and fix that.
Any other questions for our, for Daniel, our Navy Representative? Okay, wait, questions for the community? For the Navy? Okay, moving on, virtual Dean.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, good evening, sir, and um, I, I just, I'm a little bit perplexed as to your comment about. The military being upset over the farm fair being out here and the traffic that was created by that. And the reason I'm upset or perplexed is because the military are our guests. We are not the military's guest. And the military need to understand, we as local citizens have built numerous directional redirections. Highways, traffic lanes, et cetera, to, to allow the military to diverse along our roadways. So I don't understand why they're upset because every day, Monday through Friday, a lot of our local folks are impacted by the traffic that goes in and out of Navcom. In and out of Schofield, in and out of Wheeler every day. So I, I, I hope they understand what we as local folks have to go through. One day or two days a year, that because that's state farm fair is going to be there forever from now on, from what I understand. Okay? They need to, they need to bend too. It's not this their way. Thank you.
Thank you Dean, and just for clarification, there's no, nothing has been confirmed that that's going, the farm fair is going to be there forever. So we, we had a long discussion about it earlier, so just FYI, um, that is not confirmed or anything yet. Okay.
Again, that's fair. When I did the blessing for the grounds, I was told it was.
Ah, we will, we will check into that. Thank you Dean, I will. Okay, um, any other questions for our Navy Representative? Okay, thank you Daniel. Okay, Government Agencies, Board of Water Supply. Uh, no, no representative, okay. Moving on to DOT, State DOT is not available tonight. Moving on to elect, oh, go ahead.
You know, for the transportation, the DOT, um, could you, because they're, they don't seem to come at all. And so could you ask when that metal plate on H2 between Wahawa and Hawaii? And, and Wahawa, Mililani, sorry, when it's going to be taken out? It's been there like a year.
Okay, where, is that the one you brought up? Is that the one you brought up several months ago as well?
Could be.
Beginning of the year, okay, all right, very good. Okay, we'll follow up on that one too.
Cherry Shikawa.
Go ahead.
Could you, um, you know, we've, we uh, appreciate all of the government agencies that come out to our monthly meetings. But if it's possible to um, ask for Casey Abe from DOT to come out and make presentations to our Wahawa Whitmore Village Board. Because um, you know, we have had more absences from Fawn Yamada than presentations. And I've been watching the uh, Mililani Neighborhood Board meetings and Casey Abe seems to be in attendance more regularly than uh, than Fawn. So it's just a matter of making the request to have Casey come out and share with the Wahawa Whitmore Village Board. I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Yep, not a problem. I put that into, because it um, it is spotty, the record is spotty. Thank you. Okay, moving on to elected officials. Do we have the Kevin for Mayor's, Mayor's Report?
Aloha Chair Shikawa and board members, can you hear me? Great, um, so I guess just some, some quick updates. Um, Chair Shikawa, first I want to thank you for sending all of those um, videos to me regarding the dumping. Those were really helpful. I had to upgrade my data plan on my phone because of the. But if a picture is worth a thousand words, a video is worth ten thousand, so they were really helpful. But I understand that the uh, the Koa Street, it got cleaned up, but the, somebody dumped some tires or something. You sent me a note today.
I got the, yes, I got the call that, so now there are three huge tires, like tractor tires, not small car tires, that got dumped in that same area.
Okay, I think it was EMV that, that assisted in that and um, and we'll, I'll follow up with them and let them know. Sorry about that.
No, thank you.
Um, in, in no particular order, um, I think at last, last month's meeting, I think it was uh, Mr. Harvest mentioned that there was a street light out. And I talked to Warren Amazuka at DFM about that and he, and he mentioned, he said the guys went out and they changed it. I just want to make sure they changed the right light.
It's still out.
It's still out? Where, where exactly is it?
It's just before the curve.
On Kilani, right?
On Glen Avenue, right outside the.
Yep.
I'm sorry Joe, uh, Kevin, it's the parking.
Hey Dean?
I think you're, yeah.
What was the location? I, we couldn't hear it on our end.
The parking lot, right there in front of Hali Ko'op.
Oh, okay, got it.
That's, it's under the Parks and Rec jurisdiction. It's a street light in the parking lot.
It's a street light on the roadway, not inside the parking lot.
Well, there's one in the parking lot.
Parking lot. Dean, is that where the incident happened last month? I can actually take somebody out there and show them, but it's right here in our parking lot.
Yes TJ.
The light is out.
Yes.
So it's a light in the parking lot?
It's a street light in the parking lot, fronting the pool and the club and the rec center.
Kevin, I'll take a picture and email it to you so you can have some uh.
Bearing.
Bearing, that would be great. Yeah, that, that would be really helpful. I appreciate that.
Thank you. So for those of you that don't know, after last month's uh board meeting, uh. Dean Harvest actually had an accident right out here in the parking lot because the street, the light that's out in the parking lot is not working. And I think, um, just trying to give you some context, yeah, um, uh, Kevin, so it does need to be, it does need to be repaired immediately if at all possible. Because we do have a lot of our community members, kupuna and keiki, early in the morning and also after dusk in the evening. That traverse in this parking area, so I'll take some pictures and send it over to you tomorrow.
Yeah, the pictures would be great. I appreciate that TJ. Thank you very much for that. That would be helpful. Okay, and then I guess there was a request for some hedge, I think there were two discussions around hedge maintenance. Or maybe it's the same thing. It's, it's out in front of the um, Church of Jesus Christ of Latter Day Saints. And I don't know if that was discussed during the last meeting or whether this was a riser that came up after the meeting. Um, because there's a note here on here from the Neighborhood Commission that says it was received just one week before the meeting, but we're, we'll follow up with um. I don't think that's DPP. Um, I think that's probably also DFM, but we'll follow up on that nonetheless. Are the hedges on city land?
I'm sorry, we didn't hear you.
Are the hedges on, so apparently there's some overgrown hedges outside the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter Day Saints on Avocado, 538 Avocado Street. And there's a resident believes the overgrown hedges pose a safety hazard to pedestrians as they obstruct sightlines for drivers. And so I, I guess what would be helpful is it, is it on the 538 Avocado Street property? Because in that event, it would be the, the, the uh, property owners um, uh, matter to deal with. If it's on, if it's on the city right away, then, then we can send somebody from the city out.
Actually, the mock orange hedges that are along that address is on the private property, not on the city land. But there is a. For lack of a better term, there is a walking area there that is along the city and county road. So and the, the hedges do not belong to the city and county, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, so I think that's DPP Residential Code Enforcement Branch. Um, but again, we'll follow up for sure.
And Kevin, that, um, like TJ was saying, that, that area is actually directly across of our famous, um.
Yeah, our famous other avocado street property. What is it with avocado streets?
Yeah.
Um, there was a request for a three-way stop and speed bumps uh, also on Avocado Street and Walker Avenue. And I think this was discussed before. We discussed, I think, the speeding concern on Avocado at a previous meeting. Um, and DTS has indicated that they would add the always stop request uh, to the study that they're going to do on the, on the speeding over there. Because I know that they, they mentioned that they were, they were going to update a speeding report of some kind of.
Yeah, and that did come from our, that did come from our, our board. There was a concern that, yes, the.
Great.
Four-way stop, thank you.
Okay. And then um, I think that's all I have that's new, unless I've missed something. If there's anything else that you folks, that the board would like to add or alert us to.
Okay, board members, any questions? Yeah, go ahead Joe.
Uh, yeah, there are two lights out, one in the parking lot and one on the roadway.
Okay.
And go ahead, Michelle.
Hi Kevin.
Hi.
Know whether you heard my discussion with the police officer about um, me calling about the Avocado Street property and so forth. But they actually have running water on that property. I saw, I saw it happening through hose. Right by the entrance of the second building, the one with the plastic on the top.
Okay.
So can you give us an update on what's happening with that?
Yeah, I sure will. Yep, I'll follow up on that again.
So Kevin, I'm, I'm just to dovetail off what Michelle said, that's the same one that I called in a couple of months ago. Um, because the fellow was actually, he had four of those big uh, Minnehone bottled jars and he was filling up water from that hose pipe, so. Um, so there's still activity happening in that location. Uh, so. Anytime you want to sit down and work on that one, let me know because we get a lot of calls. I mean, all of our, I'm sure most of our board members, not just me, get a lot of calls on that location, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I know you, you guys are working on it too because it's private property, but we really.
We're trying, yeah.
Yeah.
I'll bring it up again with the uh, Chief of Staff.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions for, yes, go ahead TJ.
Uh, thank you Chair Shikawa. Kevin, if you could actually, um, at the next meeting, unless you have one now. If you could provide us with a solid update on what is going on with that Avocado Street property. I know we've been hearing for months now that the city is going to do something, that they've been in touch with the property owner. And at the same time, would you please reach out to Board of Water to see if that is an active uh, water line? Because there is a water line there, because if you remember, a few months ago, there was a gentleman that came to the meeting to say that there was going to be a. Some nonprofit that was going to be offering hot showers to um, those who needed it on the street. And that didn't happen, that didn't last too long. That project actually was removed from the site. And the reason that they took it there is because there was a water line. So if the property is. So if the property is in arrears or if it's in in the process of being taken over by the city, if we could please reach out to Board of Water to cap the line and turn off water to that particular property, that would be really helpful.
Yeah, so was the, thank you for that, TJ. Thanks very much. Was the, where they were, where they were having the showers, where the shower issue was taking place, was that the Mango Street property or the Avocado Street property?
No, that was Avocado and then they moved to Mango and then you know what happened with Mango Street. So but prior to Mango, they were at Avocado.
They were at Avocado. So the update on the Avocado property is that it's, you know, it's private property. And the owners allegedly are renovating the building that you see on the outside. They have an active permit and they've taken, you know, the minimal baby steps that they can to keep the permit active. So it's been, it's been really problematic for DPP because they've been out there. Don Kuchi-Takuna has been out there several times to meet with the owners. Chief of Staff Andy Sugg goes out literally monthly, if not more often. We talk about it all the time. We've been in contact, obviously, with Councilmember Matt Wires office and, and his team. But it's just, it's just exceptionally difficult for the city to move forward with any kind of a condemnation. But that is something that's being considered. And so I'm going to, when I meet with Chief of Staff Sugg, when I get back to the office tomorrow, you know, I think it feels to everyone like we just need to accelerate this process any way that we can. So that'll be my recommendation and we'll see where it goes from there. We'll give you an update as soon as I have something more to share.
Thank you very much for that. But if I could ask you to please impress upon Mr. Suggs and the Department of Planning and Permitting that this property is, is turning into an area that is starting to harm the general public and the public's safety. We have Kupuna complexes in the area. We have a church in the area. And the thing about, and I did the research, guys, the thing about his permit that's been sitting there for over two years is that at least once every 60 days, something needs to, some kind of movement, some kind of construction, demolition, whatever has to be done. So we get to like 58 or 59 days, oh, then all of a sudden we see something. But if they are not going to secure the property where the public safety is not going to be compromised, then I say we need to look at the options that the city has as far as ensuring that our community members are safe from the activities that are going on on that particular property. And those of you that have attended our meetings, that have watched our Neighborhood Board meetings, you know that we have gone out of our way as a community to work with DPP, to be patient with Councilmember Wires office, to be patient with the Mayor's office. In the meantime, our Kupuna and our residents in the area, their public safety is at risk. There is not only debris, car engines and rubbish on the property itself, but we have seen, and I'm sure you guys have seen the videos, of rubbish being tossed over into Lake Wilson, which in turn harms the water in there that eventually goes down to Kaokoua and harms the residents that are below there and the farmers that may use that water. So Kevin, if you could please, please let us know how else we can help. Because again, our public safety, our public health is becoming more and more endangered every day that goes by, every week that goes by, that nothing is done. While we understand the property owner has rights, we as a community have just as many rights for a safe environment in our Wahiwa. Thank you.
Okay, thanks TJ. I see Dean has his hand up.
Kevin, I have photos of the incident. Do you have a middle initial in your email? That's all I need to know, just the middle.
I do not. Kevin.Ozzy@Honolulu.gov.
Gotcha. Yes, sir. Thank you much.
Thank you, Kevin. Any other questions for Mayor's Office? Yes, can you please go to the mic? Thank you.
Lay Lermont, Wahiwa resident. As you're talking earlier about the park, I'd like to know why the fans in this room is not working. And, you know, it's pretty warm in this room and August is a hotter month. So the Neighborhood Board want to have meetings in here. I don't know what's, what's going on with the budget for the Parks and Recreation. Is it inadequate? Or don't you have inspectors checking the parks to see what needs to be repaired and maintained? But I'd like to request also, besides the lighting in the parking lot, check the fans. Thank you.
Thank you. That's a good point. We'll add that, those two issues, the parking lot and exterior parking lot, that one and the fans. Thank you. Okay, go ahead, Michelle.
Yeah, I just want to hook on to what Laye said. I think it was two months ago, I brought up that only half of the fans are working and you said you'd look into it. Now, none of the fans are working. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. And we can pass these on also to Councilmember's Office regarding the fans and the lights. Any other questions for Mayor's Office? Yes, go ahead.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Natasha. I am a Wahiwa resident. Another one of my concerns about Wahiwa is as a person that does walk around the neighborhood a lot in the mornings, I do see a big problem with dogs. A lot of the unhoused people have dogs many times, sometimes not even on leashes. I do, it's, it's really another health issue. There's so much doo-doo all over the place. I've actually picked up some of the doo-doo just because it's just not safe. I've also recognized some of the doo-doo is probably human feces. But I do see a problem with the dogs in this area from the unhoused residents. And I understand why they have it because they want to protect their, you know, their belongings. But a lot of them don't put the dogs on leashes. Sometimes you see dog, I mean, I've had dogs just run up to my dog, you know, and just, I don't know where these dogs come from. I do remember hearing there was a, an attack on a seven-year-old boy along Cam Highway. You know, where that, where the Wahiwa, Welcome to Wahiwa sign is. And lately, when I've driven in late at night, I've seen about four or five dogs just roaming around there. So is, what, what can be done about that problem in our neighborhood? Thank you.
Thank you, Natasha. And I would tell you what a coincidence because last week I was driving in and so I'm coming, I'm coming into Wahiwa and just by the bridge, so I see a litter, well, I'm just saying a litter, there are six. So you had the mommy and the daddy doggy and then had the four, they live right and they're, and they actually came out, you know, because there's one big block of cement that's blocking, but all six came out of the same, right when I was taking that turn, the curb. And this, and I slammed the brake because I, it looked like they were going to come onto the road, which means I'm going to, you know, but I stopped the time and then they were, they were right there. And I, it was like a standoff. And then I wanted to get out to shoe them on, but I couldn't open my door because cars were going by. So I ended up calling 911 to say, I'm stuck in this situation. There are six dog puppies right in front of me. I stopped. They're still on the road. I can't move because there are vehicles. So I have my flashes on, but can someone come and get these pups, you know? And so she told me to call Humane Society. So I called the Humane Society. I'm on the, I have my flashes on. I called the Humane Society. The fellow was very nice, but he said, oh, you called the wrong person. You could have to call HPD. So I said, I just called HPD and they said, well, the thing is that I can only go out if there's an HPD because it's on the bridge. So I, we have to be there to stop traffic. And I said, seriously? I said, okay, I'll call HPD. So I called the 911 again, explained the whole thing and they said, okay, we'll call someone. I said, so do I stay here? And they said, well, if you can, that would be helpful to Humane Society. And I said, but they're coming from, you know, all the way in town. I said, okay, I'll stay as long as I can because I didn't want them to get hurt. But that was shocking to see like six little pups and they were right on the road. And I just, I, I could, I, I wouldn't have been able to, if, if I had, I can't talk now, sorry. But it was, it was very, I was very scared for them. And so like, like you said, there are so many strays right now. And I think a lot of it, if you look at the news, a lot of it is because there are so many people who are homeless now or are in dire straits and their situation is very difficult. Wahiwa tends to be a very giving community and a quiet community. So we do have to figure out something. If this, if this population is going to grow, then maybe that's going to be a second, a secondary meeting that we have to meet with HPD and Humane Society come out. And maybe we got to figure, maybe once a week they can come and do a check or something. But if this continues and I get more calls, then yeah, this is something we got to work on for the community. Yeah, okay. They did come. They did come. It was like an hour later, but I sat there, yeah. Yeah, because I couldn't move. I mean, where would I, yeah, anyway, go ahead.
Jenny, somebody, there's an app on the phone called Nextdoor.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Somebody put that, those puppies living at the sign, somebody put them on Nextdoor app, requesting anybody that wanted to take care of the puppies, please contact them.
They must have, maybe they saw me. They think, why is that car flashing? But okay, thanks for that info. Ethan, you had it, go ahead.
I just wanted to reaffirm that I've also observed a lot of stray dogs, especially by the Welcome to Wahiwa sign and, and that little park space behind it. It almost looks like a dog park because there's so many stray dogs running around there. And I did not know that it was intended to be a dog park. Is it though? It is one? Okay.
It was, yeah.
It actually is? Okay, I was not aware. But I oftentimes see those stray dogs run into traffic and the owners follow them into traffic. And that's obviously a dangerous environment to have on the road, coming in and out of Wahiwa and for people going up to the North Shore. So I'm glad you brought it up.
It is a dog park. Okay, thank you. Any other questions at this time for, for Kevin?
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, go ahead.
Right in that park, there is now a tent set up by, and so that state land, right? So this is a houseless person setting up house.
Kevin, is that something from your office that someone can be sent out to check healthcare and all that? Because there is a tent.
Yeah, that's at the Avocado Street property, Chair.
No, this is on the bridge as you're entering Wahiwa. Just before you enter Wahiwa, there's a, there's a little curvature that right now they put like a barricade in front of it, but you just walk over it or jump over it. But there are tents, there are actually two tents right now, a large one and a small one in there with their dogs.
All right, we'll follow up.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other questions for the Mayor's Office?
Last one, Chair Chikawa.
Yep.
Kevin, you know, I appreciate all the work that you guys do in there for the mayor. I appreciate what the mayor does for our community and the fact that he's come out and done town halls in and around our Wahiwa community is very much appreciated. We've had conversations about all of the homeless that are in our community. My biggest concern is when you come off the bridge as you exit Whitmore, coming into Wahiwa. And if you haven't, Kevin, let me know. I will take you on a personal guided tour. If you look up on that hillside, you'll see a whole village, steps, tents, everything. You know, I've made, and you know, Kevin, how resourceful I am. I like, I know how to research just about any piece of property. But we're still unclear about who has jurisdiction to clear out that area because our rainy season is right around the corner. And if, like I said, if you want a tour, call me up. I will take you myself. But there are, I wouldn't even begin to count how many people that are living on that hillside. And if we get a good rain again, they will slide down into Lake Wilson with all of their belongings.
Thank you for that, TJ. I'm not familiar exactly what you're talking about. If you want to send me a map, I can follow up on it for sure. Thank you.
I will take a picture for you as well.
And TJ, it's actually on both sides. Encampments are on both sides. I mean, and we did a cleanup. We did that when we had that other organization not to be mentioned, but we, we did do, we trashed through mud and everything else. But yeah, it is not safe. Okay, any other questions again for our Mayor's Office? Yeah, go ahead. Come, Uncle. You can use this mic.
This is just a comment. And it's, it's in regards to 911. We live in a community where it's agricultural and recently we've been seeing another thefts for the equipment. So I came home on the freeway. I noticed a truck towing a a carry-on with a piece of equipment on it. The tow, the tow equipment had no license plates. The truck itself had no license plates. There were no identification on the door, which is DOT you're supposed to have. So I called 911 and I said, something's not right here. What's the matter? I said, there's a truck towing a piece of equipment. It was a tractor, actually. And there's no license plates on the equipment. There's no license plate on the truck, front and back. No identification on the door. And the 911 person told me, so what do you want me to do? I'm like, can you do your job and call somebody, maybe the police? I don't know. So we need quick response to things like that if we're going to stop. Those equipment is thousands of dollars. Our company, somebody stole our forklift carrier. It's a big piece of machine. They just drove up and took it. So, you know, we need quick response. And the police got to get on it. So I mean, I'm really concerned. I made a call. I've seen something going on in Whitmore. One day, Whitmore Avenue, I called 911. The lady said, what's going on? And I told her it was some kind of assault thing. I forget what it was. She said, what's, what's a cross street? I'm just entering Whitmore Avenue. There's no cross street right there. She said, I can't help you. I need a cross street. I says, Whitmore Avenue, there's one way in, one way out, right? So I mean, things like that is frustrating. I, what if somebody was getting killed? I'm sorry, you have to die. There's no cross street. So it's concerning.
Yeah. Thank you, Dennis. Thank you, Dennis. Dean, you have your hand up.
Yeah, quick note, Kevin, that dog park that we're all talking about, it's actually under state jurisdiction, DLNR and DAGs. It's adjacent to H2 exit eight, just prior to the bridge. So if you can just forward it to state DLNR or DOT, actually, I think it's DOT property comes to think of it, the park itself. But that's FYI.
Okay, thanks, Dean. Kevin, did you get that?
I did. Thank you.
Okay, right on. Thank you. Okay, any other questions for the Mayor's Office? Okay, moving on to Councilmember Wires Office, Kelly.
Hello, Chair and members of the board. Kelly Anaya from Councilmember Matt Wires Office. Just a couple things. Wanted to highlight that the mayor did sign both budget bills. And so some of the projects that are included for the Wahiwa community, Wahiwa Civic Center, $2 million to construct improvements and relocate the Satellite City Hall, including the driver's license services to a new space within the Civic Center. An additional $309,000 is also allocated for furniture, fixtures, computer equipment and water services to support the new offices. Also, $1.3 million for EMV or Environmental Services for electricity and water to support EMV's treatment and disposal operations in the Wahiwa-Whitmore community. An additional $355,000 for mechanical equipment to support wastewater treatment and disposal has also been added. Um, also Wahiwa Botanical Gardens, um, $140,000 to provide security. Um, likewise, Wahiwa Transit Center, $186,000 to provide security. Um, also wanted to mention that the council successfully amended the, um, CIP budget, the capital improvement budget, so that fiscal year 26 funds cannot be used to acquire land, plan or design a landfill facility or landfill improvements upon, above a significant aquifer. Um, a couple of things too. Council member was honored to participate in the blessing, um, of the, um, play apparatus at Wahiwa District Park. Um, you know, the event, as you know, doesn't just highlight the playground reopening, but it celebrates the resilience of the community. Um, I believe HPD is still working on its, uh, investigation. So if anyone has any, uh, information, you're asked to contact Crime Stoppers. Um, the number is nine five five eight three zero zero. Um, I do have a couple of things that I wanted to, um, mention, but it seems like we have a lot of, um, stuff that was brought up, you know, to HPD and to, um, mayor's reps. So maybe I'll just go ahead and take care of that. Um, let's see, which one was first? Um, regarding avocado street. Um, and I believe also possibly mango. I, I was working with Board of Water back in, I believe it was May or April, excuse me, with regards to the water. Water at both properties have officially been shut off. So I'm, I'm sorry, Michelle, I believe it was that reported seeing activity. I'll go ahead and follow up with Board of Water again. Cause it's, even though the water is shut off, um, you know, people can still, uh, I guess MacGyver it to steal water. So I'll go ahead and get that taken care of. I'm already working with, um, Board of Water, like I said. Um, and I confirmed that both properties are supposed to have the water shut off. Um, let's see.
Kelly.
Yes.
Can I just tell you for the water, it was on Monday, this past Monday, last week, Monday I saw it.
No problem. Okay. And then, um, let me see. Um, oh, the Mango Street parking. Um, yes, council member's office is aware of the alleged illegal parking. I believe that car dealership at the corner of Cam and, or Comahamal, rather, and, uh, California Ave. I am, uh, waiting to hear back from DPP. It may also be, um, an enforcement type, uh, situation for DPP. I don't believe, uh, you're allowed to park your cars like that. Um, however, Mango Street is, even though city, it is zoned, uh, commercial. So I'm just waiting to hear back from them to see what kind of enforcement, um, procedures we can possibly do. Um, somebody else also mentioned about the Olive, uh, Avenue. Uh, I believe that's a mechanic shop. Um, yeah, HPD is aware of that. I'm also, uh, trying to figure out what we can do, uh, with regards to that. Cause I believe they're parking, um, like about two cars deep into the, uh, quote unquote, walkway slash, uh, unimproved sidewalk. Um, I know DDC is working on getting the roads repaved. Um, but unfortunately that's not gonna, the biz aren't gonna go out until fourth quarter of this year. Um, let me see. Oh, um, regarding the fans in the Holicoorum, I did submit a, um, request to have them adjusted. I believe the speed is only one speed, which is super fast. Um, so I'm assuming you guys don't have it on tonight because somebody mentioned that it's really hot in there. Um, I'll see if I can follow up with DPR again. I believe that was back in May that I took that complaint. Um, let's see. Oh, and then regarding the homeless, uh, situation by the Carston Thought Bridge in back of that seven eleven, that is actually private property. Um, so, um, for Director Aggera, um, I, I don't know. That's not really a city thing. Um, you would have to probably reach out to the private property owner. Um, but yeah, that's, that's definitely been an issue, uh, for a long time. I know when, uh, when I was with the previous council member, we did do the cleanup on the opposite side, but we were trying to address that other side. But yeah, it's, it's kind of crazy over there. Um, let me see. Yeah, I, yeah, I know.
We've seen it.
Huh?
No, go ahead. Go ahead.
And then, um, yeah, I think that's about it. Oh, and then I'm sorry, somebody mentioned about the overgrown hedges on avocado being on private property. Um, do you know if those are weeds? Because if I'm not mistaken, DPP can only do enforcement if it's weeds. If it's plants or trees, that is not something that they can enforce. Does anyone know?
Would, I, I think the issue is the area that's by the Mormon church on that corner. And they have edges there, but the hedges are on their property. There, there might be some sticking out, you know, but for the most part, the hedges are on, uh, the church's property.
Okay. So hedges, it's not weeds then, like California grass?
Yeah, they're not weeds. No, they're head, they're, you know, the, the mock orange kind of hedge.
Sorry, I have no idea what that is, but. Sorry. Yeah. You know what? Um, I can look into that. Like I said, um, I can just about guarantee you DPP will not be able to enforce, um, because it's not weeds. If it's trees or plants, shrubbery, stuff like that.
Understood.
But yeah, but I can, I can follow up, um, on that one as well.
Okay. Thank you.
That is it. Oh, I'm sorry. And then, um, oh my gosh, uh, Lehuua Street. Um, not sure if you guys noticed, but you know, HPD has been working really hard and diligently to get, um, rid of a lot of those, um, I guess they're abandoned vehicles. I'm not sure specifically what they are. But you know, the issue with like that portion of Lehuua Street is privately owned. Um, so some of the enforcement is a little bit tricky. So we've been basic, or not we, HPD has been tagging them basically for the expired tags and registration, um, which is why some of the vehicles were able to be towed. I believe two of them were towed. Um, there were many others that were cited. Um, but because the owner removed the vehicles, um, you know, they, they moved it on to private property or just moved it elsewhere. Um, also we are aware of the homeless situation on Lehuua. Um, we are working on that. Um, but I don't have anything else that I can share at this moment. Um, I think that's about it. Yeah. If anyone has any questions for a council member, I can take them back.
Okay. Let me check. Standby.
Chair Shikawa.
Yep.
Uh, Laurie Meacham, I live on Lehuua Street.
I thought the board had, um, point of information.
Yeah, like, like hold on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Kelly. Appreciate all your hard work. Please extend our aloha to council member Matt Wire as well. So just a couple of things to dovetail and add to your report. The hedges, um, on avocado street that are near the Mormon church. Uh, they are actually kept quite nicely. I'm not exactly sure what the complaint or concern was earlier, but it might be that, um, and nobody except the pro, the property owner has any jurisdiction over how tall or how high the hedges can be because that is a full stop right there at the, at the intersection of Walker and Avocado, there is a stop sign. And it's true that when you stop there, when you come to a complete stop, you do kind of need to creep up toward avocado before you make that right turn from Walker. So I mean, the, the hedges are nicely kept. When they, when they cut the hedges, they take away all the rubbish. So I'm not exactly sure, um, what's going on with that. And then the other thing that I wanted to ask about was your, um, the blue building on avocado street, I mean, on Mango Street, that was once owned by the now defunct nonprofit that is no longer in our community. Do we have status on what is happening with that? Because California grass is at least six feet tall. Um, there are starting to, starting to, uh, I've had residents in the area. Call me and let me know that there are now mongooses and rodents in the area. So, uh, do we have, uh, do we know what's going on with that property?
Um, I do have some information, but I don't feel comfortable sharing. Um, I know the property owner is working, um, to, I guess to sell the property. Um, but as far as the trespassers that are there, um, I was told that, uh, they're going to be vacating the property by this Wednesday. Um, the property owner is working with HPD. Um, so we are working closely. But as far as the overgrowth, um, I can, I can send DPP out. Um, they'll, they'll give them another NOV, notice a violation. Um, but as you know, this, this will also be attached to the property. So when the new buyer, whoever that may be, comes on board, that also goes with, with the property.
Right. I guess because we're in the middle, I, I hate to keep saying it, but we are in the middle of fire season. And if the past few weeks have not showed us what dead brush and overgrown brush can do to a community. I mean, I would hate to see Wahiwa be the next Lahaina. So, and it really saddens me to hear that the, uh, owner of that property, which is a now defunct nonprofit that's no longer operating, actually has any say in that asset because there are monies that are owed to both the city and the state. And that asset should have been immediately taken back by the city or the state to, uh, zero out their balance. So it's really, it really saddens me when I hear that we have to continually wait for the owner, this now defunct nonprofit, not operating in our community, still has that option to sell the property. You know, Kelly, I, I, you know, the work that I do in the community. So again, it really saddens me that the community has to again, wait for the property owner to get enough money for the property. Um, we've seen all of you have gone into zippies. Most of us have driven along Mango Street. A lot of us have walked along Mango Street and seen the destruction that's going on over there. So I would implore the city and other powers that be to move in a more, uh, in a more timely manner to take control of that situation. Because like avocado street, that property on Mango Street is becoming a public health safety issue.
Okay. Can I just say, can I just say that, um, I understand where you're coming from? And please rest assured that the money that's owed, whether to the state GIA, whatever, however funding was acquired, it is going to be paid back. It's, it's not the owner's fault. It's going to be taken care of, but these things take time. Um, you know, I don't know if you know, but he's unable to gain access to the property. I really don't want to go into that too deep. But, um, yeah, he can't show the property if he can't gain access to it. So, um, yeah, as far as the funding though, I mean, it is going to be repaid.
So let me ask you this. Will interest be paid back to the city and the state and the county or whatever entities disperse the money? Will interest be paid on the monies that's owed to these different entities that are due monies from that now defunct nonprofit, not operating in our community anymore?
That I'm not sure.
Those are our tax dollars. Those are our, our hardworking pennies that went into the pot that allowed this now defunct nonprofit to operate in our community. And it's again, it saddens me that we as a community have to again be told, okay, wait. Oh, we're, we're, we're getting there. Oh, the owner cannot have access to the property. Because again, it is our tax dollars, our pennies, our quarters, our nickels, our dimes that went into the pot to enable this nonprofit that's now defunct to get a GIA, get a CIP funding bill. So if you could please understand where we as a community are coming from when we say something needs to be done in a more timely manner.
I do understand. I'm also a taxpayer. So those are my taxpayer dollars as well that went into the GIA and however else they got funding. Um, like I said, you know, I'm not comfortable sharing all the finer details, but I am, I am working closely with the owner. We're also working with HPD and I know he's working with other government entities at this point.
Thank you very much, Kelly. And we, again, we appreciate all the work that you do in council member Matt Wire's office. But Kelly, at the end of the day, you do not lay your head in the nine, six, seven, eight, six. Thank you.
Point of information, Madam Chair.
Right. But my taxpayer dollars is still contributing to that.
Point of information, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Dean.
Uh, the last comment made by your member, I think is rude and disrespecting the person she was addressing. And it should not be called for. You often remind.
Thank you so much, Dean. Appreciate it. Kelly, I apologize.
I'm speaking to the chair, not to the member.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dean, for that.
I believe.
Thank you very much.
Bring it to your.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Um, standby. If we just have a few more questions, standby.
No problem.
Any other questions for Kelly at this point? Mayor, uh, council member. Oh yeah, go ahead.
Uh, it's Larry Meacham, Wahiwa resident. Uh, as I said, uh, as I said, uh, we appreciate the cars being towed away from Lehuua Street. Uh, just to let you know, there's now a tent there.
Yes, I am aware of the tent. And HPD is aware of the tent. We are, we are working on that as well. Um, unfortunately, right now, the, uh, all the, uh, social services and the outreach have been exhausted. Um, you know, they are refusing services. Um, we even tried to get IHS, well, not we, rather, HPD tried calling out IHS, but he, the individual was deemed, I guess, coherent enough and they are not willing to, uh, they're not willing to take him on as a client at this point. But, um, yes, I am aware of it. HPD is aware of it. And we are doing what we can to, uh, get him into service for help. Thank you, Larry.
Thank you, Kelly. Any other questions for, yes, go ahead, Drew.
Not a question, but thank you, Kelly, for your help with the humane society. And the only reason why I'm speaking right now is that a lot of people don't know this, but they will take a pet surrender that it, that if you have an emergency situation, normal waiting time. When I called last month was the first available appointment was October 30th. But this person was going to go to hospice. Had three cats in the apartment. And trying to get an appointment online is almost impossible. And you can't really talk to anybody if you just call, unless you call the emergency, uh, pickup. But that isn't what we're looking for. So what I found out, bottom line, real quick, down and dirty. Um, if somebody's, um, either in hospice or about to pass away or did pass away, the pet that they had can be surrendered directly to the humane society. And they, they will take them. Um, and they will take it in on an emergency basis. So, and you gotta do it in person. Just drop it off. There's a $50 fee. So you don't have to put up with the, with that 30 October, because that was totally impossible. How do you wait for someone that's passing away, right? And then, so they did take, take them, uh, they don't advertise that they do that, but they will take, uh, pet surrenders on an emergency basis. Just to let you know.
Thank you, June.
Thank you, John.
Okay. Any other questions for council? Yes, go ahead.
Uh, just a brief comment because I know it was brought up earlier that the ceiling fans aren't working and it's very hot in here. I actually went to try and use the water fountains because I was overheating as well. And I noticed that the water fountains are also not working properly either. If we're going to make a report about the ceiling fans, could we add the water fountains to that too, please? Thank you.
Will do. I actually, you know, unfortunately I actually did submit the, um, ceiling fan situation back in May, but I will, um, submit one for the water fountain as well when I ask for the updates. Thank you.
Thank you for that report. Thank you for notification. Thank you. Yes, go ahead.
Um, since we're submitting reports for this building, the ladies room, the paper towel dispenser is broken.
Okay.
But, but, and there's no paper towels in there at all.
For clarification, there's toilet paper, but not paper towels, right? Let's, let's clarify that.
As long as there's toilet paper. I'm sorry. I don't mean to laugh. Yeah, not a problem. I'll definitely take care of that, Michelle. I'm sorry about that.
See Kelly, we're making you laugh, so that's.
You guys always make me laugh.
Any other questions for the council member's office? Okay, virtually any questions for the council member's office? Okay, Kelly, thank you very much.
No problem. Thank you for having me.
And, uh, governor's representative not here. Um, Senator's office, Senator Delacruz's office, Malakai? Nope, not here. Oh, there you are. Yay. Hi.
Hi, Chair. Hi, Board.
Uh, Charles Miller from Senator Delacruz's office. Um, I'll first uh, start off by answer some follow-ups from the last board meeting. Um, so there's a question asking about the private sprays for the CRB, uh, bills on, on the palm, on Royal Palms. Um, I couldn't find anything that the state or the county could do about uh, private properties. But I have been in discussion with uh, the Department of Agriculture. And they said that the next treatment will be on uh, between August 18th and August 29th, uh, weather permitting. And um, their, their plan is to do 89 palms on Royal Palm Drive and then uh, 10 palms on Kellogg. And because of uh, palm sun improvement, they're also going to be injecting um, incest, insecticide into the palms to see if that um, allows for any improvement. And then um, after they spray, they said, uh, the Department of Agriculture and Biosecurity will provide more details after the spray. So I can follow up with that after next board, uh, next board meeting. And then um, Chair, you had a question about the Kahali project. Um, the meeting got pushed back to next weekend, or not next weekend, next week. Um, so I will have to provide those updates next uh, next board meeting. And then, yep, no worries, Chair. Um, there were some questions about um, some articles written. Uh, one was about the release of uh, HB 371. Um, I'll reference one of the newsletters, um, Senator Delacruz's office. Um, that nearly 50% of all conference charts uh, to Wham Fin jurisdiction were released within the last 24 hours of conference. Um, and that bill uh, needed a conference review and to bounce the budget. Um, so just ran out of time. Um, and then uh, I believe it was TJ had a concern about some uh, foster care bill, foster care bills that died in Wham. Um, addressing that civil law article on June 11th. So I, I read the, I read the article. Um, so it was HB 1079 and its companion bill SB 1398. Um, SB 1398 did die in Wham. Because when there's a companion bill, usually the legislature just decides to go with one uh, vehicle of the bill. So they decided to go with the House bill. And uh, HB 1079 did die in conference because um, money was not released and the conference committee did not reach quorum. And um, in the district, uh, Senator plans to attend the uh, groundbreaking for the Center of Workforce Excellence Bill um, uh, next Tuesday, July 28th. And then just highlight some uh, bills that turn uh, sign, the governor's had into law. Uh, by the Biosecurity Bill HB 427 um, was signed on June 27th. Um, it renames the Department of Agriculture to the Department of um, Agriculture and Biosecurity. Establishes, establishes deputy chair position to oversee the biosecurity um, effective on January 1st, 2027. And allocates 26.6 million into my end uh, uh, fund 44 new positions. And this is Act 236. And then a fireworks bill SB 222 uh, was signed by the governor on June 30th, which extends the illegal task force to uh, June 30th, 2030. And it requires an annual, annual report to the legislature. And then the last thing I have to say is regarding the metal plate uh, northbound on H2, we have been in communication with DOT about that. Um, the joint materials are coming from Missouri and they should arrive um, on island by the end of the month. And the project is set to be complete in mid-August. And that's all I have. Thank you, Chair.
Oh, thank you for the update on the plate. We just got asked about it today for an update. Thank you very much. And we have a question from Joe.
Uh, yeah, Charles, uh, just for the Senator's calendar, the groundbreaking is Monday, not Tuesday next week?
Oh, I might, I might have misspoke. Thank you.
Go ahead, Sylvia.
Yes, um, I understand the trees on Royal Palm Drive have been treated for the rhinoceros beetle. Um, so I have two questions. Um, are there any plans to plant more trees on Royal Palm? Because some of them aren't doing too well. Um, and secondly, as I walk around Waihewa, I see a lot of trees, palm trees um, on private land that are really not doing well at all. Some of them are just dead. What, what kind of effort are we doing for the private sector? You know, i- is there any information? I know I read in the paper and we hear it on the news, but is there any boots on the ground that go house to house or to provide information to the owners of some of these trees that are really obviously dead and not doing well? But it's, but it is not on public land. It's on private land.
Um, I'll address your, your second question first. Um, I am, I'm not sure if there's anybody that goes door to door um, to address those concerns. I can try to find out and see what I can find out. Um, I know there's been concerns about the, the palms on Royal Palm. And there's been, I don't know if there's been any conversation about replanting or planting, so I can find out and get back to you uh, next board meeting.
Thank you.
Yep, no worries.
Any other questions for the Senator's office? Virtually any questions for the Senator's office? Okay, hearing none. Thank you very much. And we are going to move on to Representative Prusso.
Hi. Sorry, I have a cough. I mean, I have a tickle. Um, so wow, it's just coming on right now. Um, I wanted to remind folks, although it's come up that July 30th, we're going to have the um, meeting of the four neighborhood board meetings at Leiloh High School from uh, 6 to 9:30 about the Gondola Project. And I really encourage folks to attend. Um, and to, you know, I, I think there'll be presentations. I don't think the developer will attend, but I think that um, there will still be information shared that the community needs to know. Um, also, uh, if folks, I, I sent out my e-newsletter and if folks want to sign up for that, they should go to representativeamypruso.com. And um, now we have all the back issues archived on there as well. So um, if you need any information, you know, or historical information, it's on there. And in my most recent newsletter, um, I spent some time talking about why it's so important that we go back for a special session. Um, I think the governor has expressed some reluctant, reluctance to do that. And I think that um, from our perspective, at least in the House, we're planning to go back. We want to go back. We think that there's a lot of work to be done, especially after the recent passage of the um, OBBBA. Um, and um, looking at the cuts again, I know I've talked about this multiple times, but just to help folks understand, even though those cuts to Medicaid and the new work requirements are not going to come into effect until December 2026, um, it doesn't mean that we shouldn't start now and be really proactive about additional funding streams to um, fill in that shortfall and snap as well. So I think there, both of those cuts are going to have pretty dramatic impacts on, again, on our community, as I've said over and over. I will also say that um, as the Vice Chair of uh, Energy and Environmental Protection, I am distressed about the cuts to, what the cuts to the energy work that had been um, supported by the Biden administration will mean for um, electricity rates for our community. Um, the projections are that they will rise pretty dramatically because we won't have, solar is the, by far, the cheapest um, way to get electricity, especially in Hawaii, but not just in Hawaii, nationally, globally. It's over the past decade, it's become incredibly inexpensive. Um, and now that we don't have that kind of support from the, the federal government, um, our electricity rates, especially given that we're going to have to be hardening in, in the face of climate change, um, are, are going to rise. So we, I've been doing some work, working with um, the Chair of the Committee and then also state legislators across the country who are facing a similar situation, trying to problem solve around that. Um, I'm also concerned about the uh, cuts made to food system support. Um, so for our farmers, you might have read in the newspapers recently that they're losing uh, quite a bit of subsidy money. So all of those things are kind of weighing on us and um, those are reasons that we want to go back in a special session. Looks like it won't be August, um, but we still have an opportunity for September, October, and then our last opportunity would be November. Um, and I think the, the, the last thing I want to um, encourage folks to attend is um, on um, Tuesday, July 29th, at, from 9:00 to 10:30 AM, our Good Government Caucus is going to be having a community check-in and listening session. And we're going to be talking about open government, public access, transparency, campaign finance reform, ethics, and elections. That's going to be at the State Capitol because we're doing it as, as a caucus, but we are making the Zoom option available. So I'm going to be posting that on my Instagram um, page if folks want to go there, but I'll also um, share that with you, Chair, and then if you could share it with others. Um, so that will be next Tuesday, 9:00 to 10:30 AM, um, at the Capitol, but also on Zoom. And uh, I think that one of the topics that we'll also be talking about is the, that third legislator that um, was given $35,000. So some, we're, we're asking for an investigation into that legislator. And we, I have no idea who it is, but um, so more transparency around that. And I think with that, I'm open for questions.
I just want to, if you could repeat the date, it's July 29th, is that correct?
Correct, Tuesday, July 29th.
From what time to what time?
From 9:00 AM to 10:30 AM.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. So in case I get any inquiries about that, I can forward that. Thank you very much. Any questions from the Board for um, for uh, our state representative? From the community? Virtually. Oh, wow, you're good. Hundred percent. Thank you so much for hanging out with us. Thank you. Are you playing, um, I'm going to be, uh, I don't know if you want to hang around. I'm just going to make the announcement regarding what you mentioned about the uh, special presentation with the four boards. I don't know if you want to add anything to that? Um, if you want to hang out just for a few minutes and then.
Of course, I, I, I am planning on staying, staying. I always stay.
All right, thanks. Okay, uh, we are on section seven of the agenda, residents' concerns and community announcements. Um, I do want to just give you this information that was um, passed out there. This, I'm going to read it out and I'll give you the details. So this is the planned joint neighborhood community meeting regarding the proposed Gondola Entertainment Project in Waileua. A meeting date and time location is to be announced, which I got the information today. The presentation is on the upcoming um, project, which is a proposed gondola. You know what a gondola is? Yeah, and it's, this is um, being proposed. We develop in Waileua, in that area and the, and so they, the neighborhood board from North Shore Neighborhood Board asked if we could join with them to have a community meeting. So that would, the invitation was extended to us, Waihewa Whitmore Village Neighborhood Number 26, as well as a Millanani Malka Neighborhood Board, as well as a Millanani Neighborhood Board. Um, so they are inviting us to participate in this community discussion. Um, they have many ideas of how to approach this. Number one, because they're not getting any cooperation from the developer. Supposedly, the developer is not going to be on site or be participating. Um, they are trying to reach out to the areas that, that this could, this project could impact. And so um, for our board, if you want to uh, participate, you know, we can, but you know that our rule as a board, you know, we can only allow four people and not five. So if we are going to be there, um, you can go on, participate in that way, but let's talk about who's going. Um, the date that they are going to be having this meeting at is next week. Next week, uh, July 30th. At, from 6:00 PM to 9:30 PM. The parking is still being developed, um, they're still working on the parking situation. But the meeting will very likely be held in the cafeteria at Leiloh High School. Again, the, I, the date for this community meeting is July 30th at Leiloh High School Cafeteria, 6:00 PM to 9:30 PM. Um, and we will be, whoever's there, we will be talking about this project and the impact that it could have on the North Shore, uh, as far as development, et cetera. Um, as I don't have the, don't have the, okay, so yeah, so they'll be sending me a little bit more information by tomorrow, hopefully. And then they're also, they're also reaching out to um, the media to do a news conference that hasn't been confirmed yet, but they are looking at that. So as soon as I get more information, I'll dis- distribute to the board. So then we can discuss on who is going or who can go, et cetera, et cetera. But again, this is open to the public for the four, the invitation was extended to the four neighborhood boards. Uh, and that's the only information I have at this point. Um, and then, yeah, that's it for now. That's the other thing. And then the other upcoming, that would be the first presentation for next week. The other one is the one we discussed earlier at this meeting. The upcoming presentation is for the Waihewa Center for Workforce Excellence. The project discussion presentation is demolition existing library storefront portable building. Build a new 40K three-story office building with adjacent 86-stall parking garage. New building will be the new home of the Waihewa Library on Level 1. The DOE LMW staff will be on Level 2. And UH Community College classrooms and labs will be on Level 3. Uh, so that is the updated information on that presentation that we voted on to um, allow be scheduled in August. So having said that, we are at about 9:24, so we can move on to board business. I'm sorry, hold on one second.
Chair, Shikala.
I'm sorry, I forgot one thing. I, I apologize. Thank you. Yeah, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention that um, that Dean, our, you know, Dean will be um, doing the OLE at this uh, at this presentation at Leiloh High School. Okay, go ahead. Wait, no wait, I. Oh, I'm sorry, but, but didn't you have?
Yeah, just, just a real quick uh, public service announcement for our community. Uh, most of you may know Highway Response Towing. They do a lot of towing um, in the areas, but they do, um, they have a project going on now with the Waihewa, I mean, um, Whitmore Village Center Church. So if you've got vehicles on your private property and you would like to have them disposed of, please reach out to Highway Response Towing. They're on social media and make an appointment. And again, if it's on your own private property, they will come and remove it for free. And then a donation, a nominal donation will be made to the Whitmore Village Center Church in, with your acknowledgement. So let's help uh, clean up our Waihewa community. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, go ahead.
I had a community concern about the new library location. As you know, the library has to move to, for two years to the Waihewa Shopping Center. And they have a small facility there, but there's no sign. No one can see it. No one can. So I would like to request that the Board send a letter to the State Librarian, Stacy Aldrich, 44 Merchant Street, 96813, asking for a sign.
There is no sign on the, on.
There is no sign. There's no money appropriated for it. The landlord is, won't allow us to put one up because we're a state organization and.
Can we have a sign inside this room?
There's a sign on the window, but not outside where the people on the, on the road.
Only see if you walk up to the door, then you can see it.
And Larry, Larry, you're a step ahead of me. You're a step ahead of me, Larry. I am, I'm in communication with Stacy to try and browbeat her into it.
Well, I, I would like the Neighborhood Board to send a letter. That might help put a finger on the scale.
Okay, thank you very much for letting us know about that. Uh, I'll put a call in first. I'll talk to Stacy. Yes, go ahead, June.
Uh, public announcement for the Waihewa Lions Club. Uh, the Waihewa Lions Club kicked off uh, uh, starting a fundraiser for um, the casualties of the Vietnam War. There are of Waihewa, the Waihewa area, Greater Waihewa area, by the way. Um, there are 16 names on that list that I have. And um, I'm looking, or the, the Lions Club is looking for, and, or me in particular, I'm cheering that. Um, information on the 16 uh, people that died during the Vietnam War. And uh, I forgot to bring the list. I would have read it off, but then you wouldn't remember the names anyway, but you can contact me. Um, area code 8087732382. And um, if anybody has information on them, that would be great. Um, there's only one person I have a lot of information on, and that's uh, Terry Calmura. Um, I think we have uh, the, the Army has all kinds of information because he's the recipient of the Medal of Honor, if you didn't know that. And also looking for, uh, I've not forgotten the Korean War veterans or the, the one, the casualties. And um, unfortunately, the list that comes out from the Department of Defense only has uh, information that's. only has information that says Honolulu, or very few hometowns recorded. So to get the matchup, the people from Waihewa area to those, to those names is going to be a tremendous project. So that's why we're doing the Vietnam Memorial first, we're going to establish a plaque. And then the larger, I wouldn't say larger, probably maybe same amount or a little less, maybe. It's going to be a big project because there's almost no information as to where the home of record was. Very few of those that died from Hawaii has the home of record listed. So again, if you want to contact me, and like I said, this is going to be a project years in the making, because even if we do the Vietnam Memorial, it's going to take a while. And then after that, we start on the Korean War ones. And then, by the way, I'm just taking information, if you know of anybody that from the Waihewa area that passed away from the Gulf War or any others after the Vietnam War. So I'd like to know that. People tell me that there are Gulf War members from a Waihewa area that passed away. But I don't know who they are, they can't give me the names. So anything would help at this point, thank you.
Thank you, June. Okay, so we, it's about 9:30, so we, I think we can get through at least board business. So let's try. We are on section nine, board business, for the approval of minutes, the regular meeting on Monday...
Point of information, please.
Oh, wait, hold on, Dean, go ahead, and then I have one more after.
I have one resident concern that I'd like to address. And that is, that is, just to remind our board members, and I say our board members, you are there representing the community. And as such, your chair reads to you folks at every meeting in this message of our spirit of aloha, that there shall be no display of disrespect to one another. Now, our presenters, that talks about the presentation, but our presenters are everybody, is everybody who comes to speak before the board, who gives a report on behalf of an elected official, on behalf of the Fire Department, behalf of the Police Department. So any disrespecting of them is not warranted and is not a Waihewa spirit of aloha. It bothers me that members will speak abruptly and disrespecting the people who come before you to report on our community. And I just would like to remind them, remind all of you. And I know you folks all do try and talk with the spirit of aloha in your words. You are very passionate, but just please be mindful that, you know, no one needs to be talked down to, disrespected, or spoken rudely to. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean, well said, thank you very much. And we will remind each other about kindness and respect. Thank you very much for that. We are on board, oh yes, that's right. Sorry, sorry.
Aloha, Chair, board, everybody can hear me? Yeah, I'm going to read just to keep it quick, but I'm just here, Whitmore community member, and I'm just going to read so I stay on track. My concern is, I have to question why there was no community input about the state farm fair being hosted in Whitmore Village. In no way am I against the event in itself, but the area of land that it took place. According to Honolulu GIS, this area of land is Zone AG1, which is designed to protect and conserve open agricultural land while promoting orderly growth in rural areas, not to hold events. AG1 lands are crucial for maintaining agricultural viability and preventing the conversion of valuable agricultural land to other uses. Also to add, it is prime or unique land under the agricultural lands of importance to the state of Hawaii. Bill 64, Table 12, 21-51, lists permitted uses on AG1 zone land. Just to point out a few things not allowed on AG1 land. No public assembly, no commercial use, retail, and more. Every operation held at the farm fair goes against the land use. I question, how does it happen so quickly? When only in March of 2025, it is on record, HFB entering a memorandum with ADC to use the land. Then in June, it's a go, question mark? Permit, permit for the right of entry given after the fact, how? And also just to note as well, Kaikani's parked, two entrances on the residential side blocked off. No signs or notification. Reclaimed asphalt pavement spread on a large, very portion, sorry, very large portion and other areas of the AG1 land. Parking was a mess. Only the day before the event was a map provided on how they thought traffic could be controlled. Mobile food trucks were operating up and along Whitmore Avenue as long as cars of attendee of the fair. Cars illegally parked obstructing flow of the roadway, the list goes on. They should have never been allowed and shouldn't have, shouldn't happen again. How did it contribute to what Hawaii is trying to do agriculturally, its sustainability? Now ADC wants to rent out this space to do events, even one that has no agricultural connection. It really needs to be looked at and not ignored. Is that why no community input? Sorry, no community input was asked of. Please find someplace else to do these kinds of events. Whitmore Village is not a city that needs to be put on a map. We are a village and would like to keep it that way. Mahalo for listening.
Thank you for that. And before you leave tonight, can I talk to you real quickly? Yeah, because when we schedule that meeting with them, you should be at that meeting, yeah? Okay, so mahalo, stay, hang tight for a little while. And I did read item seven, that was the one about the, so sorry, and then we kind of jumped down. Okay, so we do have, we can probably get through a part of board business. So again, approval of minutes, the regular meeting on Monday, June 16th, 2025. Do we have a motion to accept the June 16th, 2025 minutes?
I motion, we accept them.
Do we have a second? All in favor? Any opposed? The June 16th minutes are approved. Chairs report and board actions, calling for any disclosures by board members, any meetings, events that you attended that we should know about.
I went to the park blessing, I mean...
I can't hear you, they can't hear you.
I went to the blessing for the playground.
Okay, yeah. Anyone else, anyone else for the blessing of the playground? Okay, any other board members attended any other meetings or events? Hearing none, moving on to item two, correspondence and distribution. The correspondence was the email I received about the upcoming July 29th meeting regarding the proposed development of a gondola project out in Waialua. Board members, please make sure you let me know if you are attending. We, again, not more than four people, so we want to make sure that we are following the rules on that. Item number six, determination of board committees and committee chairs.
Cherry Shikawa, excuse me, I think the date for the gondola meeting is July 30th. And July 29th is actually the meeting that Representative Amy Prusso is talking about to be held at the State Capitol.
Yeah, I apologize, you're right, thank you very much, I wrote it...
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's a good catch, thank you. Keep moving on to item C, so determination of board committees and committee chairs. Item number one is education. Any, anyone wanting to be nominated for education?
Chair?
Yes.
I would like to nominate Erin Mendelson for the Committee of Education.
Any other nominations for education? No other nominations, Erin, do you accept?
Thank you, Sylvia, yes.
Okay, thank you, yay. Military, I've been doing it, but if anyone else wants to work on that, June, or, we have two nominees, June. I can't, I can't hear you.
I'm willing to take the military affairs.
I am, I'm also willing to take the military committee position as well.
Okay.
Chair, are we allowed to have two?
The suggestion from our NCO said that they can be co-chairs. So if you're willing to be co-chairs, or did you want to separately do? Are you folks okay to do co-chairs? Are you folks willing to do co-chairs?
Yes, we are, I am, yep.
Okay, we're good on that, very good, thank you. Transportation and OMPO, currently that is Joe. Anyone else interested in transport OMPO? Okay, Joe, you're on. And Water? Water, anyone for Water?
I'd like to nominate Ms. Yvonne here for the Water Committee.
Yvonne, you good? Okay, very good. And last is Hawaiian Affairs.
I'd like to nominate Dean Harvest.
I'd like to take that position, actually, Cherry Shikawa.
So both of you, wait, so we have Dean and... P. Dick, okay. Okay. Huh? Yeah, but now there's two people who are, so it's not like... Sorry, everyone, have... So are we putting that one on? Okay, Yvonne, explain.
Just to clarify, because I'm not 100% certain with the nomination of Dean. To my, at least to my knowledge, he's no longer a board member, but community can still be committee members. My recommendation is that we do put that committee on hold just so I can clarify to make sure that the seat is properly filled. Just because I don't want to give wrong information, say that he absolutely cannot be a part of the committee, I want to make sure I can confirm. That's just my recommendation.
Thank you.
So, okay, so we'll get that, we'll get back on that to confirm. But right now, we do have Erin in education, June in military, transport Joe, Water Yvonne, and Hawaiian Affairs is TBD. We'll get an update next month on that to confirm. Okay, very good. And we have quick announcements, and we're just going to say the announcements number eight. The next Waihewa Whitmore Village Neighborhood Board Number 26 scheduled meeting will be announced, and we did that at our convening meeting today. Informational contacts, City Streets Pot-Hole Hotline, 808-768-7777. State Streets Pot-Hole Hotline, 808-536-7852. Hart Maintain Roads Hot-Hole Hotline, 808-566-2299. Cities Refuge Inspector's Office, 808-768-5220. Schofield Noise Complaints, 808-656-3487. Email is USAGHI dot COMREL at gmail dot com. Or the 25th Infantry Division Public Affairs Office at 808-655-4756. Or email USAGHI dot COMREL at gmail dot com. And with that, this meeting is adjourned. Mahalo, everyone.